And we are live. Just waiting for our attendees to show up.
Are you ready, Andy?
All set. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, welcome to the planning board meeting for February sixteenth. I'll begin with a roll call for the planning board. Alden Clark.
Here.
Bob Coop.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
And Rick Tainer. We have five members here. Before I ask Counselor Cameron to open up the Planning and Development Committee hearing, I would like to take a couple of items, just quick items out of order. On our agenda, we have two public hearings for seventeen to twenty-one State Street and seventy-nine State Street. Unfortunately, we've been operating with not a full board for several months. We're two members short. And when, as a result of two other members not being present tonight, we do not have the six members that are required to vote to approve a special or a special permit. So we've contacted the applicants and they have requested continuances to our next meeting on March second. So I would like to entertain a motion, first of all, to continue the public hearing for seventeen to twenty-one State Street to March second.
Rick, this is Don. I'll move. Go ahead, Alden.
Okay, yeah. Motion to continue seventeen to twenty-one State Street to March second.
Okay, motion Alden and second Don. I'll do the roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Rick, yes. And similarly, I'd like to have a motion to continue the hearing for seventy-nine State Street to March second.
This is Alden. I'll move to continue the seventy-nine State Street hearing till next week, March second. I mean, next meeting, March second.
This is Don. I'll make a second. Keep it simple for the note taker.
Great. Okay, roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Rick, yes. Okay, with that, Counselor Cameron, would you open the Planning and Development Committee meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Tainer. So as Chair of the City Council's Planning and Development Committee, I'd like to open up our portion of the public hearing. And haven't done this in a few years and I've never done this on Zoom, so I may be a little clunky. So forgive me and I'll take any direction from anyone who wants to provide it. I think as our roll call, I don't have these folks in alphabetical order, but I'll call each counselor's name as I see them in the panelist. So also on Planning and Development would be Christine Wallace, Counselor Wallace.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Connie Preston.
Present.
Thank you. And other counselors, again, this is posted as a committee of the whole, Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Zied.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Present.
Thank you. Council President Shand.
Present.
Counselor McCauley.
Present.
Counselor Donahue.
Present.
Thank you. So I believe we have ten members present and I will be monitoring. So we've got certainly a quorum of the Planning and Development Committee because we have all three members.
Counselor Cameron, I believe Counselor Lane has just joined us.
Okay. Counselor Lane, we just did a roll call. Can you just announce that you're here with us if you can unmute yourself?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Okay, thanks.
So Counselor Lane is also here.
Okay, great. Thank you. So this is how I propose that we carry the public hearing forward. First, I'd like to ask Counselor McCauley to make a presentation about the proposed amendments, the proposed ordinance actually. You know, typically, we might be doing this as describing what has changed since the last time, but we have a number of new counselors and new members of the Planning and Development Committee. So Counselor McCauley, I'd be happy to have you give as much or as little detail as you feel is appropriate at this point. After that, we will go to comments and questions from the council and the planning board. And we'll just kind of leave that open. I think that Andy will be able to see who is raising their hands on this and call each and we won't try to go, you know, all planning board, all city council will try to let anybody who wants to speak, speak. After that, we will move on to the public hearing, the public comments. And once the public comments are done, we'll bring it back in and have a discussion and have appropriate motions. I think our goal tonight would be to have the planning board have a recommendation to the council and to close the public here, its portion of the public hearing. And then the Planning and Development Committee could make the, it's appropriate decision whether you want to close the hearing and keep it in the committee or close it or keep the hearing open and keep it in committee. But I think that after tonight, with any luck, the planning board will be able to have passed it on to the city council. So with that background, Counselor McCauley, would you please?
Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Director Port, would you mind putting up the document? Might be easier to cut, as I kind of walk through it, to just scroll through the different sections, okay?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you all for coming and for your patience in this matter. It's been a long road coming and we've heard a lot of input from residents and as well as officials along the way. We started out with a zoning table and we have listed, it's permitted in a number of sites, one, two, three, R one, R two, R three, B one, B two, B three, et cetera. And it's special permit in H S R A and H S R B. I did have some questions on that. We originally had, over time, had have everything in a special permit, but we felt the volumes just didn't warrant it for some of these short-term rentals. In H S A B and A and B, what we found is that we, in the conversations that we had, we were finding a lot of one-offs and oh, by the ways, and it was very tough to kind of standardize that type of review. So we opted to go with a special permit process on that. The special permit is good for three years. It runs with the, it's personal to the applicant and meaning it's, they can't file this in the registry of deeds as a special permit. In terms of the permit, it's not permitted by right. It's permitted subject to a zoning review and zoning determination. So there'll be an administrative review based upon the requirements that we've laid out in section four. There's eight of them. And so if, if, if an applicant had met all eight criteria and it was approved by the zoning administrator, then the zoning administrator would issue a zoning determination and then it would go to the licensing portion as well. We still are keeping with a two-step process, zoning and licensing going forward. Thanks. So in section, section one is the purposes of this. Very quickly, we're trying to define the use and regulations that short-term rentals would be allowed in the city. We're trying to find a balance between a commercial use as well as residential and housing stock issue. And we're trying to minimize the negative impacts on the neighborhood. You know, it's not perfect. We're not perfect, but we're trying to take a stab at this to move forward. Section two is a list of definitions. Started out as a smaller section. It has grown considerably. It started out just as a definition of home share, limited share, owner adjacent, but it's expanded to booking agent, operator, operator's agent, all of those special relationships that people have with owning and running their homes like this. In section three, it's a bit of built-in suspenders where we say it's where it's permitted and the terms of those permits. It really lays out in language, in, you know, language that what we're trying to propose and do within the table itself. Section four is requirements. There are eight of them. Name and address of the operator. Operator is the owner of record. The address of the S T R U, the category, zoning district, the mass D O R number, which is state law, a plot plan and interior layout along the way. Our approval criteria mirror those eight requirements. So if somebody were to submit an application with six of the eight, it's not an application. It's not complete. So, and we put in there, there are no variances for parking, for the parking requirement going forward. Section, also in section four is restrictions. One per owner, occupancy rules for everywhere but on Plum Island. There's a list in section five of ineligible units that would be there that excludes in-law apartments or lean-tos or anything like that that we found folks renting out. There are exceptions. The biggest exception we had was up to fourteen days. And this is consistent with mass state law that an owner would be exempt from the special permit process, would have to get a zoning determination and they would get a special letter from the licensing permit that's, that they would sign and validate that they're only going to rent for fourteen days. The fourteen days is important because the state has you sign the same document. They won't collect their six percent, our six percent and their three percent tax revenue. If you can, if you can pledge under penalty of law, that you're only going to rent it for less than fourteen days. Section seven is an exemption for Plum Island. It exempts the number of days. It exempts parking. It exempts owner occupied. It exempts number of short-term rentals. We think that's just been the nature of Plum Island. And we'd like to at least get these folks to register with the state and then register with the city. And then we can at least understand the order of magnitude of the business out there. Though the last one is number eight is an effective date of this is consistent with the licensing application. And the last piece is a residential update for the parking requirement. And it is a one bedroom per, one spot per bedroom rented out along the way. I know I went quickly on that. I know some folks have been involved for a while and some folks haven't. But I thought that might be the balance. So I'll, I'll pause there and see if there's any questions or directions or clarifications needed.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley. So Andy, can you help shepherd the comments and questions through as you see, hands raised and so forth?
Sure. You looking for a public comment now or?
No, for questions from counselors and planning board members and comments.
Rick, if I could just say, in earlier, I know you and I spoke earlier and I'm wondering if we could do the public comment first. That way we, when we have planning board in city council, questions and comments, we might want to incorporate some of that feedback.
Okay.
Or whatever, whatever you usually do.
I guess, I guess I was, I was thinking that maybe just to begin, let's say, we begin with questions first for clarification, in case there's anything that members don't understand. Then we can move to public comment and then come back to a discussion of the ordinance. How's that?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess are there any questions about what you've read and what Counselor McCauley has presented?
I see Counselor Preston.
Yeah, hi. So I have many comments, but if we're focusing on questions, I guess my, my question first would be why the carve-out for H S R A and B versus other neighborhoods within the city? And then secondarily, why the carve-out for Plum Island in terms of, you know, why do we see this as a differentiation within Plum Island versus within the city neighborhoods to me? And I will fully admit, I am recognizing here that I am probably a very late fly in the ointment, but I am going to be so firmly planted in the ointment. But why would we carve out, you know, the, the lack of restrictions for Plum Island, but impose these restrictions for neighborhoods within the city?
Yeah, chairs, would you like me to respond or?
I think I'll, I'll make a comment after you, Counselor McCauley.
Okay, so to answer the question, we carved out Plum Island right at the bat because there's been a long history of rental seasons out there. And quite frankly, it is, it is part of the culture out there. And state law has dictated that these folks register with the state and, and we in the city would like to also have them register with us. But I think changing the requirements on Plum Island that they've been for so long was too onerous for those types of users. And especially just the nature of what it is. Now, we'll go back to, you know, how is that different from, let's say, war two or war three? This has been a lifestyle in Plum Island. This is a new phenomenon in wards two and three. And what we're seeing is, we're seeing commercial enterprises bumping up against private, private property and enjoyment and quality of life in the neighborhoods. And we felt that this was the better place to begin the restrictions going forward. Your second part of the question was H S A and B, I think I, I tried to address it upfront, is that there's a lot of historic properties with land. There's a lot of, in our discussions for the last twenty months or so, we've seen a lot of, I don't want to call them exceptions, but they're, you know, they're one-offs in this particular area. We thought that it would be easier to have another set of eyes in the neighborhood input in, as a special permit in these particular districts.
And I will just add, everything that Counselor McCauley said, I think, you know, it is, for me, Plum Island isn't so much cultural. It's just longstanding homeownership practices of people renting out their properties. And I think across Massachusetts, there have been exceptions made for these beach-type seasonal communities. So I think that makes sense. In terms of High Street Residential A and B, I was on the council when those were created. I think they, they do deserve some special protection. I know there are advocates in the community who really pushed for more of a Z B A involvement with special permitting. I think that that was a good, good approach to keep it confined to High Street Residential A and B. And again, for, for the same reasons, those are, those are just longstanding historic properties that just deserve a little bit more scrutiny. But you know, the, the underlying process and parameters is not any different for, for those, those districts. And again, High Street A, for people that don't know, that's more the, the Newbury line till I'd say State Street. And then High Street Residential B is, is kind of a portion past the mall out towards, probably out towards Atkinson or so, a little bit of a, little bit of a jagged tooth there. But, but I think that's, that's a thought there. All right, we'll have comments later, other questions. And Andy, if you could continue fielding those, that would be great from counselors and members.
Counselor Preston, did you have any other questions yourself or did you want me to go to the next person? Okay, Counselor, sorry, Don Walters, next to him.
Yes, just one question, please. Towards the end, Counselor McCauley, you mentioned there is one parking spot per bedroom. Just a question clarification. Am I correct that the maximum would be three bedrooms per the definition of limited share rental unit?
They would, off the top of my head, the answer would, I would say, whatever the maximums are in the definitions for home share as well, which I think is up to four, then it would be up to four, right? That was a recommendation from the planning board that had one. And so limited share would be three and that would coincide with three.
Thank you.
Robert Cooper.
Thank you. Just, just a quick question, Counselor McCauley. I think we've talked about this before, but, but just to confirm relative to parking. The way I read section four, A and B, parking must be off-street and on-site. And the only exception to that, other than Plum Island again, which is set aside, the only exception to that is the downtown overly district. So just, just to confirm that. And the, the second question I had is to do with a special permit process and the change to that and what that means relative to public hearing for individual units and when neighbors slash neighborhoods may have an opportunity to participate in that process.
Sure, two, sure thing. Thank you. So yes, in parking, I believe your assessment is correct. That's how we do that. We tried to put in language that would baseline the non-conformities that some people had that have today in their existing homes and then to stay that for this commercial use, you'd need parking over and above your baseline going forward. The second part of that in the public hearing is, you know, the zoning review and zoning determination of public documents. And they would be posted, butters in the zoning process would be able to most likely appeal via special permit process, special permit appeals process if they didn't like the determination. And then secondly, there'll be a public hearing on the licensing side as well. So we think the public's engaged. We, you know, the reality is every host is getting a reset, whether they're good or bad to that degree, where we'd like to have strong compliance that can itemize and index any of these, let's say, problems that we have to be able to go forward with that and then to bring that up in subsequent years. So I, I don't, it's a question that I've, I've had all day today regarding the special permit and having complete public access, public comment access roles within, prior to the predetermination zoning. And I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you. Thanks.
Counselor Zie.
Thank you. I just have a, I see that Attorney Eichmann is here too. So I don't know if he could, he could help with this, but here, I'm just trying to stick with questions to make sure I understand. So in R one through R three and B one through B three, that is not a special permit. That is not the animal that we're talking about here. That is permitted subject to footnotes K and L or subsections K and L. But it, what I'm confused about is, for example, on the table, it says permitted. It says P. But then in K, it says that the Special Permit Granting Authority, the S P J shall be, you know, the Zoning Board of Appeals. But it's not actually a special permit because in L, it's a, it's a zoning determination. I guess what I'm getting confused about, I'm really asking a very targeted legal question here about, is that a special permit that you're implying or is it really just a permit? So that, let me ask that one first. And then just to follow, so maybe Attorney Eichmann can help too, is, is there precedence for things being permitted like this that then expire after a period of time? Because if there's anything we know, it's that oftentimes zoning comes with grandfathering. And so if a use is permitted and things change, the rules change, the zoning changes, typically, obviously, people don't have to go back with existing uses and conform to new rules at that time. So I'm, I'm first confused about the S P versus P and then the K and the L because K says special permit and then L says permit. Can, can you help with that or can someone help with that?
This is Andy. This is actually probably goes to me. That's an error, actually, as we were re-correcting with the special permit piece. I think what we need to do here is remove the K from cells R one through, through B three. And you're correct, that's not applicable to those cells. The idea is to have the H R S, S the H S R A and H S R B as special permits and only the L footnote for the R one through B three.
Okay, so that definitely helps make it make more sense just reading the language. So maybe, Andy, if you can, to the second question, is there a precedent for permitting a use but subject to a time limitation? So in other words, let's say, just give you an example, let's say in three years, we revisit this. Not that anybody's interested necessarily in doing that, but let's just say in three years we do. And just to give a wild example, let's say at that time that the will is to eliminate all short-term rentals. What happens to all the permitted uses? Again, very much like today, if you change something from, let's say, residential to commercial, you, you obviously don't end all the residential uses. They remain, you know, they remain until such time as they turn over. So I'm confused about that because this is, this is zoning. So that's my, that's a question. Can you help with that one? Or can Attorney Eichmann or somebody?
Yeah, Attorney Eichmann, did you want to speak to that or I don't want to?
Yeah, I can jump in. Like, yeah, I can jump in quickly. Counselor Zie, question. Yeah, grandfathering is always a consideration. To your first question, yes, it is, there is precedent for limiting the time period of special permits. Frequently, it's done as a condition of the special permit, but in this case, it's going to be done across the board for all special permits. And secondly, as far as grandfathering goes to your question, if in three years, the council decided that they wanted to repeal the allowance of short-term rental units, there would be grandfathering for those special permits that were still in existence and had a period of time to run. But once that period expired, then the grandfather, grandfathering, excuse me, would expire as well.
So thank you for the, for the clear and concise answer, but here's where I'm still confused. You said that there's precedent for special permits to do that. But as we just said, L is not a special permit. By definition, it's not a special permit. So is it, is there precedence for making a use permitted P, I guess, with this? Is this something that's ever been done or tested legally? Where you can say it's a permitted right. You may do this, but it's only good for so long, not a special permit. And I'm sorry to be very fine with the language, but I literally mean this is, this is not a special permit now, if I understand. So it's not those rules. We're permitting a right to use something. Even it says not by, but can you do that? What number one, the very first sentence is P does not equate simply to permitted by right. Can you do that? That's my question for you.
In response to that, yes, you can. I think this is really simply explaining that what generally goes unsaid otherwise, which is that you will, a zoning, the zoning administrator is going to make a determination for a particular use as to whether it qualifies for an as-of-right use. This just creates a specific procedure with a specific determination being made by the zoning administrator. So yes, you can absolutely do that. I don't, I have not tried to research, haven't been asked to research whether a permitted use could be allowed to be given a term as a, as, for instance, one year. And I don't think, I believe the term one year simply goes to a license. I'm not sure that, I don't see it here that it's given to a, and as a right use, but perhaps Andy can correct me. I didn't see that here.
Yeah, attorney, so with the, and again, this is based on the discussion that's evolved to date. And the provision here does indicate that the zoning, in addition to the license itself, but actually as part of that process, effectively what will happen online is applicants would apply online. The zoning administrator is required to verify that, you know, and sign off on the compliance with the zoning elements. But effectively, and so what's happening here in this section, you're correct that in this section, that zoning administrator's determination lapses annually. So there has to be a verification of that, like you said, with the licensing process.
Right, so, okay, I do. Right. So, okay, I do recall that now. So that, I think that's fine. Frankly, that's what that simply does is it provides a continual check by the zoning administrator, specifically required one in the ordinance, um, on whether the compliance is maintained year after year. But the youth remains as of right. So I don't see a legal problem with that.
Right. So, so I'm sorry to, I'll just do two more things. So one is, um, I, I understand why you, you would want, I understand the theory behind it. What I'm, what I'm worried about is, is the potential to change things. So if you, what if you change the, the list of, of things to be more strict or less strict in the future? Um, do current holders of, of now what is considered a permitted use? Are they able to renew under the old ones? Do you end up with all this legacy? And then one last thing and I'll yield because I don't want to take up everybody's time. But Andy, to Andy, if you eliminate K from the R1 through B3 in the list, I get that, but then the special permit doesn't make any mention of the general ordinance. And I'm not sure if that's your intent, or if you're intending for the general, the, the license from the licensing commission to apply to both K and L. Because right now only L mentions that general ordinance, K is just a special permit. And I don't know if that's really what you meant, or if both of them are supposed to get the licensing commission approval in addition to either the special permit or the letter permit. So I'm, I'm sorry to be really in the weeds, but I just want to even understand what we're debating before we get into it. So this, this, because the way it's written now would almost imply that the special permit.
Yeah.
Proceeds need for, for licensing.
I think I understand where you're coming from, but I, I guess I would respond to that. I'll defer to Attorney Eichmann who may want to speak to the grandfathering piece. But, um, I, I think here what you're seeing is that the, um, the special permit is, um, is for the High Street District. But, um, the rest of the ordinance is actually what's covering, uh, and making it clear that a license is required for the short-term rental unit. Regardless of the fact that it is, is required here to get a special permit. So it does not relieve, the ordinance here does not relieve them uh, of the obligation in conjunction with that licensing ordinance to get that license. Um, they might need both the special permit and the license. I don't know, I don't know that the footnote ad needs to cover that, I guess, is what I'm saying, because the rest of the ordinance does speak to that.
Yes, and just I'll respond quickly on that. It, it's difficult to make any kind of determination sort of in theory about what possible not conforming uses or rights might extend if the ordinance is changed. That really has to be done on a pretty specific basis, based on language that comes, you know, forward as an amendment later on. But the general rule is if it's an allowed use at the time that the change is made to make it a prohibited use or a more restricted use, then as long as the use ma- is maintained without being discontinued, then it will continue.
Okay, I, I will yield now. Maybe we could discuss whether, what, what we want out of that is instead of just questions. So thank you to everybody.
Uh, Counselor Preston.
Yeah. Hi, sorry. I, I lowered my hand earlier when I was actually trying to unmute myself. Uh, so just a point of clarity and then an additional question. Uh, I just want to be super clear that I have no problem with a carve-out for Plum Island. I just am trying to gain an understanding of why we are imposing all these regulations, um, on people who don't live on Plum Island in general. But then my question is to Director Porter, maybe better to Jennifer Blanchett. But, uh, within the last 12 months, can you help me understand how many unique, not same person over and over again, but unique complaints we have had against short-term rental units in the city?
Hi, this is Jennifer. I believe that I've had in that 12-month period um, four a- actual, um, zoning complaints that have come in to me. I have heard that other people have made comments to various counselors, but those, I, I don't know the addresses at which those would be to know if they were unique complaints or not. But, uh, I believe it's only been four that have actually sought some sort of enforcement or further investigation.
Um, Jennifer, this is Andy. Could I ask, perhaps you could clarify for the counselors and the planning board members here? I don't know if you're able to indicate, um, whether the nature of those requests or concerns relative to any of the issues like parking or, uh, noise or disturbance or whatnot, um, just for their, their better understanding.
Um, to my, the best of my recollection, I don't have all that documentation in front of me. Uh, I believe two of them had to do with just generally whether or not that, um, you know, whether or not they had the right under the current ordinance to do so. And as everyone on this call is probably aware, this conversation has been ongoing for quite some time. And, uh, the city, I, my, myself on behalf of the city and in consultation with the administration at that time, had determined that we would, uh, not seek additional enforcement beyond a letter noticing people that they may not be in compliance. As we were still discussing this, I do think that some of the con- specific concerns that individuals cited were noise. Uh, and I did have to refer them to the, um, police department who is available 24 hours a day. And let them know that if they did have an additional complaint that they, they should contact them. And then, uh, parking as well is a concern. And where I don't have any jurisdiction, zoning doesn't have any jurisdiction within the public right of way. That had to be referred to, uh, parking enforcement or law enforcement, depending on the, the specific nature of, of the traffic issue.
Great. Thank you very much, Jennifer. Uh, Counselor Vogel.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, as a follow-up, I, I have two questions. So I'd like, I'd like to ask both. But first, as a, as a follow-up to, uh, the conversation just a moment ago with Jennifer. How about complaints or feedback, um, from those that are currently in the business? Um, with regard to, you know, how these restrictions or how the, how this, this, uh, ordinance may affect them. Have, has anybody come directly to you? I, I've certainly, certainly that all, uh, city counselors have had feedback. But how about all the way up to, uh, to you?
I certainly have fielded far more of those type of calls of people who are concerned uh, as to whether or not they would still be able to operate, um, a unit within the city. I get, I get many calls about people who are looking to buy properties within the city, uh, but are concerned about the, the cost of the properties and perhaps being able to offset them. And, um, you know, I, and I, of course, I do also get quite a few calls on Plum Island and people, people wanting to know where they've operated those units for years, how they would be affected. So I, I couldn't count the number of, of that type of call.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, the other question that I have, um, a little bit in the weeds. I've gone through this a couple of times. It makes fascinating reading. Um, the one question I have, and I might even phrase it as a bit of a concern. Um, especially in the south end of town or in the more congested areas of town where parking is a premium. Uh, the one parking place per bedroom seems fairly restrictive. And I'm wondering if, um, the authors, uh, can comment on that, please.
Sure, um, the, um, this is a direct result of, uh, many public hearings. Uh, the residents have overwhelmingly, uh, asked us to address the onslaught of parking that happens in their neighborhood. Um, the planning board, uh, has made this recommendation twice, once in October and then, uh, um, and then the previous year that we put parking and assigned parking uh, based upon a commercial use, uh, consistent with this. So, um, yes, it will create some heartburn for, uh, those hosts in the south end. But, um, we're not always doing things to be complacent to the hosts, but rather to find the balance with quality of life in the neighborhood. Um, and allow under certain conditions, a commercial enterprise in that neighborhood. So, um, you, you know, every time we, uh, lose a house to, uh, a short-term rental plan, uh, we lose housing stock. Every time we, um, uh, we allow someone to, um, not um, comply with parking spots, we congest up a neighborhood and create, um, uh, you know, negative feelings, uh, in the neighborhood itself. So, um, this was, uh, the, um, you know, from my perspective, uh, and why I, um, um, recommended we insert this in here is that, um, uh, parking, um, and, and having rules for parking are very important to the residents who are impacted by this. I hope that answers your question.
Um, thank you. It just, I'll continue just real quickly and then I'll yield. Um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm in, I'm pretty much in agreement with all the, that you have said, and I understand certainly all that you have said. Um, but essentially, if you live in the south end or live anywhere in town where you do not have off-street parking, uh, you're not eligible for, uh, participating in short-term rentals. And, um, that, that, just, I'm, I'm a little bit stuck there.
Okay, we're, we're in the que- we're in the question phase, not comment. So.
I understand. Thank you. I yield.
Uh, Heather Rogers.
In regards to the parking, um, one thing that I've been thinking about and I'm curious about, do you take into consideration that in a long-term rental, that if there isn't sufficient parking, that down the road, you're going to be raising that as a, as a point? Um, or as somebody is to purchase a home without a driveway, let's say that there's going to be limitations as to how many people could live in that home and how many cars could be occupied by that home in the same regard that we're limiting parking here?
Andy.
I'll defer that to Jennifer.
Yeah. So I, uh, this, this parking requirement in this section is specific to the use as a short-term rental. And it would not apply to the rental of the home for longer than a period, you know, for, for long-term rental, as you were suggesting. Um, there's also a provision in here that grandfathers in any existing non-conformity for, uh, the single-family use of the home, whether it be by the owner or by a long-term occupant. So, um, it's a, that would be a good concern. However, these regulations are specific to this use.
And Jennifer, are you referring to the 31-day, uh, timeframe? Is that correct?
Yes, any long-term rental would, would be exempted from the one-per-bedroom criteria.
Uh, so Heather, I see you still have your hand raised. Did you have, uh, did you want to take that further?
I just wanted to make the point that it does create the same situation though. A long-term rental with limited parking is going to create the same problem on an ongoing basis as it does in the short term. And that's one of the issues that I have there.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Vogel.
I'm sorry, I just need to lower my hand.
Okay, uh, Counselor Z.
I just wanted to ask another, uh, legal question about the interplay between the licensing aspect, which I know we're not discussing the details of that, but I'm, my goal is just to ask about, um, the timing and interplay between the two. So, um, is the intent here that, uh, you know, the person who wishes to do this would concurrently apply? Let's say they're in R1, so they're going to go and they're going to apply to the zoning administrator. So currently are they allowed to apply to the licensing commission? And, um, it, it may go without saying, but just to absolutely confirm my understanding, obviously if you fail one but pass the other, you, you don't have a short-term rental. I mean, you, you can't have a valid zoning use, but, and then fail to get the permit for some reason, the licensing. Um, let's see, pardon me, licenses the term. Or vice versa. And to, to Attorney Eichmann perhaps. I mean, basically the, the heart of my questions are a set, addressing or assessing risk for the city. So if somebody is, is saying, well, I was able to get, uh, a zoning determination that it's, it's allowed, but I, I failed to get the licensing for whatever reason. And again, we'll discuss those details, I'm sure, in the license and permits meeting. But how does that all, um, play together? And are there any, wha- what happens, uh, in the event that there's a conflict or a timing issue where one exists and the other one doesn't?
Uh, well, this is Andy. I just offer that I think both are required here to have legal effect as a, uh, allowable use. But I'll defer to Jennifer and Attorney Eichmann if they want to elaborate.
Yeah, uh, before we go there, uh, I just want to add in that if we do this right incorrectly, then it'll be an online type of application. And we've, um, aligned the licensing with the zoning ordinance. And it requires the same type of information, uh, a little bit differently. So, um, an online application could do both. Um, could handle, uh, both, uh, types of scenarios and then, uh, be, uh, approved and then move to the, uh, next queue.
And, and very specifically, uh, the ordinance, uh, one of the requirements in order for I, having read the licensing, one of those requirements is an affirmative zoning determination. So that's a specific answer to your question. Is, is the chicken or the egg first? The positive zoning determination needs to precede the license. And I would defer the, uh, the obligation to get both to Attorney Eichmann.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I mean, I second what Andy says clearly. They're sep- they're in separate areas here, but you have to have both to have a valid, uh, short-term rental unit. So, uh, you can specify an order and it sounds like pursuant to what Jennifer said, there is an order specified here. You will have to get your zoning determination first, but you need both to have a legal unit. And they can be enforced on either side, depending on which, which permit you do not have.
Um, okay, I'll yield there. Thank you.
Uh, any?
See no other hands raised at this time. Oh, I see, uh, Mark Wright. That was right.
Uh, thank you. Could, could you address, um, or, or, and if this is not the appropriate time to ask the question, I'll defer till it is. But, um, what was the thought process behind, uh, making it owner-occupied only in the city?
Uh, Counselor McCollough, did you want to take that?
Yeah, I will. Um, the thought process is, uh, we're losing housing stock. And if somebody wants to, um, come in and, um, uh, purchase property in certain areas and, um, you know, live across the country and, uh, rent short-term, then that doesn't help us in the long-term, uh, in our long-term housing stock. And we think that there are less problems. So that's one. Two, we believe and have been validated through, um, our conversations with some third parties on this that, uh, folks who are owner-occupied, um, tend to have less problems and be, and are better hosts than people who don't live here. Um, that's not always the case, but I'm just saying that, um, uh, the, uh, the data that, uh, uh, we've been shared, uh, says, says that. And, um, so between the two of them, that's, that's really the push on that.
Um, Counselor Wright, did you have any other questions?
No, not at this time. Thanks. I'll lower my hand.
Uh, Chairs, I see no other hands raised at this time. I'll defer to you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Eddie. Uh, before we move into public comment on this, I'd just like to remind people, uh, there are a number of people in the audience and some of them may have not have come in, uh, at the very beginning, that the board has already voted to continue the applications for 17 to 21 State Street and 79 State Street, uh, to March 2nd. So if, uh, if you're here for that purpose, uh, and you're not interested in short-term rental units, uh, you may certainly leave. Um, just, so now let's, uh, move to, uh, public comment, uh, public questions.
Heather Rogers, Counselor, you end up.
Oh, there we go.
Before we move to that.
Um, before we go to public comment, I just wanted to, um, I did prepare something that I wanted to say, just in regards to this as, as a, as a whole.
Actually Heather, could you, could you hold that till after the public comment? Because that's when we're going to have the discussion and comments by board members and city counselors.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rick, do you want to call on people or let me do?
Yeah.
Control.
I assumed you wanted me to do that. Is that right?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, so we have, uh, Jackie, um, from, uh, the real estate team. Did you want to address the board of the commissions and the council?
Oh, yes. Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm on vacation. So, um, I apologize if you hear some background noise. Um, so I, I, I'm, I was finding this meeting a little hard to, um, follow. I have read the previous minutes. And I just want to express some concerns related to, one, just being a new, Newburyport owner. I own on, on the Newbury side of Plum Island, but I'm a new Newburyport owner as of Monday. So, yay me. Um, and I just wanted to have some, so, just like some clarity. Yay me. Um, and I just wanted to have some so just like some clarity around some questions that I have regarding. I'm just, you know, my experience, and these are posted in the public comments also, is that there have been very few noise complaints. Or just general complaints on Plum Island overall. And and I know in other cities, and I am sure that in Newburyport too, that they track the calls and what the complaints are. So before the council makes any sort of decisions, I think there needs to be some sort of tallying related to specific complaints from the police department. Um, I feel that that's missing from this, and I think it needs to be very specific and very calculated in terms of. This is really a problem, or we're anticipating a future problem specifically in the Plum Island overlay district. Where that is the culture of the island is long, short-term rentals and and long-term rentals, frankly, over the winter. Um, and then my next, my next question or sort of comment, and and I don't know, I don't know the right form. If I should just keep going or or and get through all of them, and then they'll be addressed or not addressed. But my question is, how many calls have there been about owner occupants? And 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 what they've been doing in the summer and and what the problems have been related to owner occupants versus rentals. I I just think there needs to be real clear delineation in terms of where the complaints are really lying. And 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 my sense is based on these meetings and reading over all of the the previous comments on the ordinances. And 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 the drafts that y'all have relayed to the the city. Uh, is that there it more seems to be related to in-town versus on the island. And and so there's some severance, but I feel like we're putting sort of these restrictions on the both. Pop, you know, both over Plum Island overlay district and the city as a whole. And I think that's a mistake. I think it's a problem. I I think it's not realistic. And I think if there's really a very serious issue related to like, uh, an example was given from um Jim. That, you know, someone in Hampton, New Hampshire was jumping off a roof into a pool, the police should be called. Like, that's a very scary issue, so that that's my that's my first issue. My my second issue is related to um, the the general, the the one-hour call-out. I think that's not realistic, and I think the city buying software in order to. Have the neighbors call a software to complain about other neighbors who are staying at a place for a week. Is not the right avenue to take, frankly, and I think that needs to be handled through the police department. And then my last comment, and thank you for, I'm probably going over the two minutes, so I appreciate it, um, is that. I I'm not completely understanding how the ordinance will work in terms of the timing. So you know, what I've seen is June first, how will that be realistic? So, you know, if anyone knows, you know, real estate, certainly me and maybe others of you on the council as well. But, you know, we have individual leases. This is not just all Airbnb and we can cancel these leases. Like, we have written leases with tenants who are coming to stay at property, and those leases run with the land. So you cannot cancel those leases in advance of this ordinance then being put into place. We have to honor those leases. So thank you for your time, Council. I appreciate it.
Excuse me.
Jackie.
Um, Chair, this is your note-taker. I need uh to know Jackie's uh last name and address.
My last name is O'Connor, O apostrophe C O N N O R, and my address is ten sixty-third street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Thank you.
Uh, Michael Underwood. Uh, Michael, you'll have to unmute on your end if you'd like to address. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Andrew. Hi, my name is Mike Underwood, and I am a twenty-two-year resident of Ward Two. And I live at twenty-one Beck Street, and I have come here to address um. A couple of what I've heard tonight. Uh, one thing I'd like to start with and say is we all deserve more scrutiny. Before we allow our neighborhoods to become short-term stays and not just the residents of High Street. I'm here because I want licensing, I excuse me, I don't want licensing without special permit. I and most of us here bought our homes to raise families uh and live our lives in peace. It is in the interest of all the residents of a Newburyport to limit the number of strewns. Most of us have chosen to live in a neighborhood and not in a hotel. Being in the South End for twenty-two years, I'm concerned specifically at the impact to my neighborhood. Uh, the downtown and the South End are frankly neighborhoods that have a lot more to lose. Um, we have, we are closer together, we have less parking, and we would benefit frankly from. Uh, more oversight of strewns. You know, regarding uh some of the things I've heard tonight regarding complaints, you know, frankly, as good residents, we typically take it up with our neighbors. Because, you know, we know them. Um, going forward, if we need to start to track the type of complaints that we're getting or the challenges that we're having with. Uh, these, then I think that that means we're gonna have a lot more calls to the police, and frankly, I'm willing to do that. Um, look, I think adminis- administration is not enough to protect the integrities of our neighborhood. I think um to ensure that. All of our our neighborhoods are not impacted, we deserve to have a public uh permission process that takes place. Um, and lastly, I'll say current zoning does not allow for short-term rentals. Uh, to uh Ms. O'Connor's uh last comment, if you have a lease, that is not a problem of the city. Um, protection, ignorance of a law is not an excuse. Please, please enforce and protect our current laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, next person is Tom Colterjohn.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Tom Calderjohn, sixty-four Federal Street. Co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. Their proposal before this joint committee is a serious concern to the trust. We believe it negatively negatively impacts historic neighborhoods. It has already taken up much-needed rentals and whole houses needed by permanent residents. It absorbs affordable and moderately priced housing. Not the quote-unquote official official affordable housing, mind you. The short-term rental proposal previously had some good protections for homeowners. This proposal does not. It is upsetting that the removal of special permitting. From the R-one, R-two, and R-three districts has been made. We understanding that the staffing is short, and it's a lot of work to enforce. But there is no excuse to dump this on every neighborhood in Newburyport, except of course for Plum Island. All, add more staff to the planning office. It is long overdue. There is no reasonable, no reasonable remedy in this proposal for the butters and neighbors. This proposal benefits only a few. It certainly does not benefit the average homeowner. It is placing a commercial use in a residential neighborhood. I would encourage all of you to carefully read Jane Snow's recent letter, including her data. Her data uh of February eighth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, next person is Eric Premack.
Good evening. Uh, Eric Premack, thirty-three Pine Hill Road, Newburyport. Um, I'd like to start with a couple of questions. I guess you could maybe answer them first, or or I can just. Beside everything, but I was just curious, how many Airbnbs are, do you have registered now? And how many would this uh with these uh new restrictions eliminate? Could anybody give me an idea on that?
Uh, well, for the uh, Councillor McCollough, you may want to speak to part of that, but for the Office of Planning and Development, and and certainly Jennifer, the zoning administrator can weigh in. But uh for the Office of Planning and Development, we have not been able to do a comprehensive analysis of those that are listing these days. Or operating as short-term rental units and how that would uh, the provisions would impact all of them, because they're sometimes, uh, as the attorney had mentioned earlier, sort of a site-specific. Uh, you know, review has to be done to determine, say, parking, for instance, um, and some other things like uh whether or not the the owner lives on the premises and whatnot. So uh, it's a little bit hard for us to do an analysis in advance and say, here's what that is uh with a little bit more uh more work.
Gotcha. Okay, I used to, I used to have a property that I used to uh do short-term rentals on. I don't anymore. But it went, it went rather well. Uh, for for one of the main reasons is that there are no hotel rooms in this city. Um, there's literally four tiny inns, and there was no place to stay. And when people come here, whether they want to visit their family, whether they come for events, for weddings, to visit their kids at the local schools. If they can't stay here, they have to go to Seabrook, to Hampton, to Amesbury. They have to go. People want to come to town. All right, it's a very popular town. I know sometimes it's, it can become a victim of its own success. But the reason that there are successful Airbnbs in this town is because there are no hotels. I know um, there's been a plan that has languished for several years that would bring more hotels to this city. Um, but it hasn't happened yet. Uh, again, people, people want to be, they want to stay in Newburyport. They don't want to stay in Amesbury or Seabrook or Hampton. Um, and and short-term rentals distribute people into various neighborhoods. They don't just put them everywhere. They are scattered throughout the city. They park, they walk into town, they use the rail trail that the city has spent so much time and effort building and maintaining. Uh, they come here to walk the boardwalk, to sit downtown, to sit along the river. And they also rely on hosts who tell them where to shop, where to dine, where to go. Uh, neighborhood interaction, it's a positive impact for the city. Uh, they may see places and visit places that they normally wouldn't, because hosts may give them information to do that, right? Um, you know, one thing that someone mentioned earlier, uh, again, was the complaints for four noise complaints for the year. Uh, not to beat on it, but yeah, I wonder how many general complaints the police get for noise from regular rent residents. I would guess it's uh, I would guess it's far, far and away above that. Um, I also believe that taking these short-term rentals uh should not be done to increase housing stocks. Residents, residents should not be responsible for affordable housing. That's the council's job. That's the planning board's job. Um, and if parking was that tight, why not issue resident stickers? And then have people who came to visit park in long-term lots. So I think there's just a lot of shortsightedness in this. Um. As a person, I've I do some development in town, and I've been involved in CBA meetings, historic meetings. And to get special permits takes so much red tape, so many reviews. I just don't understand why we need to be bogged down with more regulations, more oversight, more paperwork, more bureaucracy. The state, state of mass already has a process for this. And if you start having special permits required for these things, you're gonna have neighbors now fighting over the right to have, have them. Or not have them with each other, the same way they now fight over somebody doing a renovation. Um, another question I would have is, why does Plum Island get an exam? Um, I think I would personally, I'd rather stay downtown between between the months of uh November to March than stay out on Plum Island. Um, you know, you say it's part of the culture, it's been going on for a long time, but it would certainly give them an unfair advantage to everyone else. Um, many of these hosts, many people who 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 operate these Airbnbs. They're from moderate to low income. They're not always people who own, live in California and own a property here. They use the money to make. In an expensive town. Um, I think there are investor property. But I think the number of local-owned properties far outnumbers those. Um, just last, I just think that, you know, the reason these things work is that people, again, want to come to Newburyport. They want to spend their money here. They want to go to the restaurant, want to go to the shops, and that money stays in the local economy. I think restrictions like this is just a killing it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Premack. Um, just a reminder for folks, ask you to limit your comments to two minutes, just out of respect for others. We do have a few others in the queue. Um, Leela Wright, uh, next speaker.
Hello. I'm Leela Wright, fifty-five Reservation Terrace. I am on Plum Island, but I'm speaking as a resident of Newburyport. Um, I'd also like to just state, I am a local real estate broker of more than twenty-five years. And most of you know I'm a very strong opponent of personal property rights. And I really had to, you know, sit down and try to digest what exactly is a desired outcome here. Are we trying to regulate unruly short-term rentals within the city limits? Or are we looking for a new revenue stream through an occupancy excise tax? Or are we looking to unofficially ban short-term rentals? So, short-term rentals are defined as a furnished dwelling rented for a period of thirty days or less. Short-term rentals are part of any tourist-driven community all over the world. This is nothing new. Intributing. Residents or victims of these short. Economy within the downtown businesses and the restaurants. So why not just create a straight policy? Regulations that will allow the city to establish fair and best practices for the best outcomes with clear enforcement guidelines. And accompanied fines and penalties, for instance, three infractions or complaints, and you lose your license to operate a short-term rental within town. For two years. If somebody were to violate it, it could incur a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fine and risk any chance of. A short-term rental license in the future. Once again, I have to say for a city that likes to claim that they're a self-community. Again, this doesn't feel inclusive. You have, you know, it feels to me as if. You're discriminating against a property owner. Or not having enough parking, for instance, if they live in the South End and they they have a two-bedroom unit they'd like to rent. But they only have one parking space off-street. You know, it just doesn't, it doesn't feel fair where you've got different rules for different areas of town. And this is gonna continue to cause problems down the road, I'm sure. Um, lastly, I just want to say this, this document is very heavy-handed. First, it's an overreach, it's unreasonable, it's unfair, and frankly, it's necessarily cumbersome. This is something that should be easily structured as any other new business application and process. Thank you.
Thank you, Leela. Um, next person is Stephen Delisle.
Hi, thank you. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to commend the members of the uh. The planning board and the city council for taking on this uh, this task. This is a big one. And uh, you guys are are doing some really good work. Um, secondly, the one thing I noticed uh with the the ordinance as proposed. Uh, with respect to the table of uses in those two footnotes. Um, the P, the P-type permit. Where it is uh an online application um for zoning review by the zoning administrator. I would note that the the appeal rights fro- from that determination by the zoning administrator. Are only to the applicant and not to uh members of the the neighborhood, the butters, et cetera. And this is sort of at odds with the way that um. Section ten H five typically runs with respect to a building permit. And it seems to me that the the right granted here by this permit is something that is much more significant than a building permit. So in the context of a building permit, a neighbor has the ability to. Appeal an applicant's building permit. So here, it seems to me that. It makes more sense for the appeal rights to ex- include everyone rather than just the applicant. Uh, so that that would be my comment uh with respect to the the ordinance, uh, the zoning ordinance piece as currently drafted. Uh, secondly, I would also um. Echo some of the other comments that I've heard tonight from some of the other speakers with respect to the effect of the short-term rental craze. On low-income and moderate-income housing. I mean, this is something that we talk about uh frequently at different meetings. Uh, of different boards in town, and it seems that we would be doing a disservice generally to. And it seems that we would be doing a disservice generally to put ourselves as a community in a position where our housing stock is being cannibalized by these short-term rental units, which by their very definition, don't really do much for the community as a whole. They are businesses plopped into residential neighborhoods. So I think we need to be careful about that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Stephen. And just perhaps a note for Attorney Eichman, perhaps he could speak to the appealing of zoning administrator's determination as compared to, say, a building permit or whatnot. Next speaker, John.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Hello?
We can. Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. So unfortunately, I couldn't disagree more with the previous speaker. As far as contribution to our community is concerned, one, I am a Realtor. I, so I'm, I'm in this housing market every day. The houses that in many cases are short-term rentals are properties in good condition. They're desirable and therefore they warrant, you know, what they warrant as a one-night or multiple-night stay. If these were to hit the market, it's not solving any affordable housing considerations other than maybe the one bedrooms that wouldn't be eligible. And I can tell you as someone who has rented out one bedrooms for clients, you know, in Newburyport right now, those could garner $1,800, $2,000 a month. So I don't know if that's considered affordable, but really what I want to talk about is what the short-term rental currently does, you know, for our city. Right now, it's bringing people into our city that otherwise might not have the opportunity to stay here. Renting a short-term rental is, you know, in a housing format is very different than a hotel stay. In most cases, it is more affordable, which allows people to come in groups. It allows people to have additional funds to dine in our restaurants, shop in our shops. We can all agree that, you know, from the hotel discussion, we are in dire need of a large-scale hotel where not only events can be hosted, but you could have, you know, 20 people to town and have them, you know, have some options on places to stay. Right now, that just simply, you know, is not a reality. So it's providing downtown shops and restaurants with patrons and customers that they likely would not otherwise have. So it's providing a solution for a city that really has a lack of lodging options right now. How does it inconvenience us? Sure, at points, is there less parking? Maybe. I live across the street from one of the busiest and probably on the larger scale, short-term rentals in the city. I can tell you, you know, the inconveniences that have occurred as that place has been rented out have been extremely minimal to me. I receive far more difficulty parking. My, my household is a two-car household, but we have one spot. So we park on the street in some capacity every day. I have much more difficulty with people coming across the street from Cashman who were visiting their friends on boats in the summer than I ever have from the short-term rental across the street. From what I can count on my hand, maybe one or two occasions, I could attribute three cars to that four-bedroom house. Whereas when it was a long-term rental, when it had teenagers living in it and two parents, at one point there was four cars parked on the street every single day. So the parking thing doesn't, you know, ring true. The housing thing does not ring true because most of them are going to be properties that either garner a high amount of rents, or they're going to be properties, if they're listed, are going to be high-value properties. You know, we have chased away large-scale investors from this city. And that's why we don't have, you know, a current hotel. So now why are we going to chase off other people who have chose to purchase property in our city? They have chose to pay taxes. In many cases, they've improved the properties that they have purchased to make them better rentals and garner higher months of money on a, you know, nightly rate or weekly rate, whatever it may be. And I'm all for putting some sort of process in place. But what I am not for is putting in a process that will overnight kill an industry that is flourishing across the country. It makes no sense. It is not good for us as a city. It is not good for the people who have invested in our city. It is certainly not good for the restaurants and shops that are dependent on these types of people coming in. You know, if you're looking to put more strain on shops and restaurants that have already struggled throughout COVID, this is the way to do it because you have all admitted, you don't have the data, you don't have the numbers. But if you're saying there's 150-plus properties, I think very easily you could see that majority of them are not owner-occupied. So that would take them off the potential list. You know, who wants to rent a property? If I go to rent a property for a weekend, I certainly don't want an owner staying in, in one of the rooms. A lot of these properties are occupied over the holidays or for special events. And the way I read it, and I could be reading it wrong, it sounds like you're expecting that there be a house manager or an actual owner on the premises at all times. You know, that's crazy. And I just think that when you're going to put something like this into effect, you know, this isn't a modification. This is an assassination. And it's also very scary to think that people's property rights could be changed this drastically via a meeting. This is something that needs far more research. It needs a lot more public opinion and it needs more data. I don't think anyone is in a position to really vote on this the way that it's written right now. Regulation is fine, but you need to be smart about it. You need to be careful. The way this is written right now, it's using a missile to kill a mouse. And it's fine to be proactive, but it's not good to drastically change the way we do things when there hasn't been a reason shown that we really need to do that. I'm a citizen. I can call the cops on a noise complaint. I can talk to my neighbor if there's a problem. I don't think that we need to put all these measures in place right now.
Thank you, John. Next person is Luke Shipman.
Thank you, Luke Shipman, 217 Northern Boulevard. I'm on the island as well. Just would echo what John said. I guess my first question would be, I guess, perhaps a simple one. I, I'm not certain I understand the intent. And if I, if I pick up what's been said in the meeting, I'm not sure. I guess it makes sense. If there is a public nuisance problem, it would seem like we would have sort of reams of data about that. And from best I can tell, it sounds like we have some anecdotal evidence and it sounds like there's these four complaints in the past 12 months. So I guess it makes me wonder, what are we trying to solve with this? And then I would follow that up. Why do we think this would solve for that specific problem? And I would follow up and said, what if it doesn't solve for that specific problem? Excuse me. I'm sorry. I have a cough. If it doesn't solve for that specific problem, do we find ourselves increasing the restrictions at some future date? The other question I would have is, is how would this be enforced? And I think, I think Mr. Brown, you commented on this, that there is a, I don't use this word with negative connotations, but some sort of surveillance of Airbnb presumably for people who are doing it. How do we, how do we enforce such a thing for the Airbnb-type short-term rentals? That would be my, my two questions. My, my comment would be, it seems odd to me living on the island and as a part of Newburyport that we sort of market ourselves or brand ourselves as a tourist community. And then claim that the tourists that come here to eat in our restaurants, to buy food at our stores, excuse me, stuff at our stores, that that would, that they are somehow the, the problem. It would seem to me that we would want to encourage that. So again, second, what, what John has said, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Luke, next person we have is Mark R. And Mark, if you could just give your last name and address as well for the note taker. Thank you.
Sure. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, so my name is Mark Realbuto. And my wife and I own a house at 203 Northern Boulevard on Plum Island, just down the street from the last speaker. And so just like to say, so we understand that there's a need to have some regulation around short-term rentals, especially around safety. There are however, a few items in the ordinance that cause us concern. The first is the 24-hour local contact. While we find having a point of contact reasonable, we don't believe that them being available 24 hours and reachable within one hour is reasonable. You know, if there's a noise complaint at 3:00 AM, the police are called. What am I, the owner, supposed to do about it at that time? We believe problem properties could be addressed with the owners during more normal business hours. The second is regarding the licensing process, the information to be submitted and the need to go in front of a public hearing every year seems unnecessarily onerous. For example, if there is, if there's going to be a safety inspection, why do we also need to submit an interior plan? Would that not be reviewed and certified during the safety inspection? Listening to many of the other calls on this topic, it seems there's not a lot of data behind this. It feels like we're going more on anecdotal evidence and observations as opposed to hard data. We don't know how many short-term rentals there are. We don't know how many complaints there's been. We don't know how many short-term rentals this would be affected by this regulation. And like one of the previous speakers said, it feels hard to, as a citizen, to think that a counselor could vote on this with that lack of hard information and data. The effective date of June 1st does not seem to consider the realities of this coming summer rental season. The tourists and their dollars support the economy of Newburyport. And lastly, just like to know, you know, knowing a lot of people who own short-term rentals, especially on Plum Islands, a lot of them had put a lot of money back into the houses, not just cosmetically, but in terms of safety and improvements towards the long-term viability of the house. And so that's money being put back into the housing stock through the rental market that, you know, as someone who also owns a house that I live in, is much harder to do when you don't have that rental cash flow. So I think that's something else that should be considered. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Next person, Kate Blanchard.
Hi, thank you very much. My husband and I both live in and offer short-term rentals on Plum, Plum Island at 877th Street and 8 Nancy Street. We're supportive of some sort of regulation and registration of short-term rentals and kind of coming out with some very clear guidelines. But what we don't agree with, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. But what we don't agree with are several items in the current ordinances as they're written right now. With both of our properties here on the island, we've not had a single complaint in the time that we've been doing this. And we believe that most hosts out here foster a very safe and respectful environment, providing visitors that come here with lifelong memories of Newburyport and Plum Island. And it is one of the biggest reasons why we are both residents of this community and also are investors in this community is because we believe this is a very special place that we want to share with other, other people. We echo the comments that others have made related to the one-hour response time and the 24/7 availability of emergency people and operators for the, for the properties. We don't think that's very realistic, nor is the best approach, especially for major issues that may arise. You know, we, as operators and owners of these properties, you know, we want people who are, we want our neighbors to feel safe. We want our neighbors and our community to feel like they should reach out to authorities if necessary. Should there be any large noisy, you know, noise issues, a big emergency, other kinds of safety concerns, really trained local authorities are best equipped to resolve those kinds of situations appropriately and safely. And of course, we would be available and our property manager is available. But it's, it's the matter of fact is if something's happening at 2:00 AM, it's pretty important to get the right people involved. And more, more often than not, that's not going to be the owner of the home. And then the other, the other piece I wanted to bring up is the June 1st deadline for making this, putting this in, into practice. You know, if at that point that carries, it, for non-compliance, it would carry a $300 per day fine for non-compliance and doesn't allow anyone the proper time to research, discuss, execute and implement these ordinances. And rushing the process for implementation can be misguided. And, you know, we wouldn't want to rush something this complex in terms of getting into practice. And we certainly don't want to be out of compliance on day one just because the process isn't being put into place effectively. To be clear, we support the additional guidance and, but feel that short-term rentals should be simply registered and not heavily restricted, especially on Plum Island. We want to make sure responsible owners and managers aren't punished for the maybe few bad actors that are out there. We suggest that maybe we start by, you know, registering short-term rentals and spending the right time for researching and collecting data before making big decisions on how to, how to really manage any issues as they come up and making sure we don't overdo the processes and making assumptions or trying to fix issues that may not actually be there. Thank you for allowing us to add our voice here tonight.
Thank you, Kate. Next person is Sean. And Sean, if you can give your last name and address for the record.
Sean Buctiari, spelled B-A-S-M-B-Y-A-K-H-T-I-A-R-I. Proud Newburyport resident, living at 8 Barker Street. First and foremost, thank you for hosting the meeting and sharing the proposed ordinance and allowing the public to share their comments. I did have a few points I wanted to make, but they've been previously made well by those that spoke before me. So I'll try to speak on the points that maybe haven't been clearly stated just yet. To put it bluntly, I am against the ordinance. I think that short-term rentals provide more good than they do bad for the community. And if we were to heavily restrict short-term rentals like is proposed in the ordinance in front of us, I would feel very badly for the local businesses first and foremost. And there would be obviously a loss of tax revenue for the town, which otherwise could go, go towards good projects for residents. I think something that is not fully understood by a lot of folks is that in order for your property to be on a site like Airbnb or verbo.com, you have to be previously registered with the state of Massachusetts Department of Revenue. You cannot even come close to putting your property on these sites without first being registered at the state level. I'm looking at Airbnb now with the Newburyport search and there are 188 Airbnb search results in the town of Newburyport, which means 188 of them have more than likely had, have already registered at the state level. If we're proposing that we, we also want a secondary registration process at the town level, I'm personally not against that. I think properly-run, professionally managed and professionally oversighted properties probably does end up benefiting the experiences for the guests in the long run. But I do, I do want to make that, that important point that you can't just put your property on Airbnb or Verbo without first registering at the state level. It's just not possible. Secondly, contrary to popular belief, unlike traditional bed and breakfasts, hotels, motels, et cetera, Airbnb has a screening process that's based on previous guest reviews. I myself own several Airbnbs, not in Newburyport, but in other markets. I also have a professional property management company where I help folks manage their Airbnbs. And so what's important and nice for us as a property manager and owner is that I get to see whether or not a guest has had good reviews in the past and whether or not I want to accept that guest in my own property. And so if they're, if they're not accepting them and a property that I own or manage based on previously poor reviews, they'll just go book at a place that doesn't have a screening process. I guess the last point I'd like to make, which was already previously echoed, is the restriction around parking. If the goal is to declutter our streets by putting a restriction in place that states a short-term rental must have one off-street parking spot per bed. That states a short-term rental must have one off-street parking spot per bedroom. Then that short-term rental, obviously, either can't be a short-term rental or can only rent out one bedroom. The alternative obviously is that there'll be a long-term rental and as a long-term rental. You'll have one car in the off-street parking spot for a three-bedroom and then you might have one or two other cars depending on how many adults. Are renting that long-term rental. So my point is I think there's a better way to solve some of these problems. I'm not against solving these problems, but I think as a community, we can come together and. Get to a point where we could solve some of the issues that the town has, is trying to solve, but do so in a much less harsh manner. Thank you for your time and I look forward to other comments if there are any.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, next person is Jen Ainsworth.
Hi, my name is Jen Ainsworth. I live at seventy-seven Faison Mill Road in Newburyport. Like Sean said, um, a lot of the things that I thought I would want to address have been addressed by some previous. Speakers, but I might be able to um add a little bit more. Um, I'd just like to say I, I agree with the, many of the previous speakers, Eric Primack, Leila Wright, Luke Shipman, John Grauitz. Kate Blanchard and Sean. We are a long-term residents of Newburyport. We have a family here and we. Several years ago, about five years ago, bought a property on Plum Island. When we were looking at um buying a holiday property somewhere. And decided that why should we not just um have a sort of staycation approach to. To it and we, we bought one on Plum Island, so we didn't have to travel far. And could enjoy more time with our family, especially with, you know, you know, busy working lives. After a couple of. Uh, years decided that we would try to rent it out and um we were surprised by um how much interest we had in it and it's been. A very good experience for us in many ways, not just um, you know, helping to pay, offset some of the mortgage costs. We have had um some guests uh be. Uh, local people, people that actually are residents of Newburyport, business owners in Newburyport. Who also have the same sort of mentality that they want to be nearby and still work. But have a staycation attitude about it. Some of them are Newburyport residents or within the local municipalities. We've had some people from all over the world in the short amount of time that uh. We've had it operational from um Hawaii, Brazil, Paris, London, New York. Um, and those people, I can tell you, those people, all of the people have been absolutely using all of the downtown amenities, the restaurants and stuff like that. I, I, as far as some other comments that I might have about it would be. Would be about the uh noise violations. We haven't had any. Um, we haven't had anybody complain um neighbors or anything. We've always been immediately responsive to our guests. As, you know, even not even be able to maybe operate the door lock, let's say. But um I was just about the wording of the violations. Would there be something in there about maybe best efforts to the uh operator such as. Having like a noise detection device that alerts the operator and allows them to contact the renter to give them a warning. Or something like um having um fees. Attached to the rental agreement saying that if there was a violation of any kind that they would be, you know, held liable for that. Cause that would certainly be something that, you know, would perhaps deter people from that. Um, and then very quickly, so I don't want to take up too much time. I had a question and a comment about the parking spaces as well. Our property happens to have, you know, uh more than enough parking spaces, but I'm just from the point of view that. We happen to have four children of different varying ages and none of them want to share a bedroom. With their siblings. When we go on vacation, we often need to have four bedrooms. There might only be one car. So what I'm confused about is. The specification that there'd be one parking spot per bedroom. Are you actually limiting it to only having one bedroom? If I was a family traveling and we have one vehicle, but we want four bedrooms, does this mean that we cannot use that? Property even though we only have one vehicle? Um, so uh, uh, thank you very much. And. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, next person we have is Stephanie Nikicich.
Thank you, Director Port. Stephanie Nikicich, ninety-three High Street. I, um, if you can remember their comments, I would like to um join in. With uh Michael Underwood, Tom Calderjohn and Stephen Delisle. I think most of who you've heard from tonight are uh. Plum Island residents or S T R U operators and Plum Island is already through these ordinances. Really exempted from uh most of the regulations of the. I and the others, the speakers I've mentioned, we're long-term mainland uh residents. And we've been here, we've all been here since uh. Two thousand seventeen, when questions about short-term rentals first started coming up. On the mainland, first started coming up in Newburyport and they came up because of neighborhood complaints. So for five years, the city has been trying to deal with this rather than just. Follow the law, which is, they're not allowed under zoning. Been trying to um come up with some solution for this. And it's really, at least on the mainland, and for me, it's about neighborhood integrity and long-term housing. After five years, at the end of last year. Thanks to Council of McColling and many, many public hearings. This has been discussed for years in detail. We came up with uh or the, the council or the planning development and planning board came up with a. Proposed zoning ordinance which required a special permit. In every residential district except on Plum Island. In Newburyport and those, that was just recently changed. So that there's no special permit required in R one, R two or R three. And the reason that happened was simply because um the ZBA. Our zoning board of appeals didn't want to handle the applications. And uh also our planning office said they were overworked. So that is, I don't think that's a good reason to go back on something that after a lot of public input. And a lot of planning board and city council input, we'd come up with something that was good belt and suspenders for the mainland. And I, I don't, in two minutes, I can't uh try to address what the ZBA's problem is. But as a question, um, which I don't expect to be answered immediately, but I would really like Director Port. To let uh the city council and mayor Reardon know. Exactly what he needs in terms of increased budget and I agree he needs it. So that the planning office can. Can deal with issues. Of zoning and. The desires of residents over developers. As we move forward. I really wish that we would go back to special permitting in every residential district excluding Plum Island. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, next person, Nancy Caswell.
Hi, uh Nancy Caswell, three Jefferson Court, uh Newburyport, obviously. And I own Brian on seventeen State Street and I've been listening to the conversation. And uh echo some of the statements um by those just recently, Jen and Sean in regards to the Airbnb. Specifically really appreciate the perspective on the parking piece, seems a little. Aggressive and prohibiting and limiting to hold um a four-bedroom or a three-bedroom household to one car for each. We um most uh households travel with children that do not drive and so therefore. They wouldn't bring a car with them on vacation, but would require a um separate room. I also uh operate in Airbnb, not here in Newburyport and do agree with the statements that it can be managed or micro-managed. From the perspective of the homeowner in a way that um we know who is arriving at the home. What the expectation of the travel is. Often they look to us to be procures. Events or parties can be limited um and. Agree that um dollars are invested on an annual basis to maintain the home in a way that probably it doesn't happen. Without that cash flow. I wanted to speak on behalf of what downtown has um built and established on the, on that perspective. From uh, from those that have moved into town to those um as we've grown and as we've um transitions, buildings into different changes of use. We currently know, and these are pretty accurate numbers, that realistically, there's about sixty-four hundred total seats, including. In just full-service restaurants, including patios. This excludes anything in the plaza. Um, this is solely downtown. Fifty-three hundred seats total, um excluding uh patio and if a restaurant. In full service is looking to turn any kind of profit, we're thinking about an eighty to an eighty-five percent capacity. At our current population, that would be the reality of a baby, of anybody who lives in town going out to eat. In the summer, once every three days. So. And in the out, in the off-season, the reality is that we're looking at having to dine out once every other day. And that's to support all restaurants. Uh, and.
I'll show you, I'll show you, I'll show you. Let's see, planning board two sixteen. This is. Report to the planning board. Okay, so right here, it's.
Sorry, go right ahead. Uh, Nancy, are you all set? I'm sorry, just uh.
Okay, yeah, sorry. So I was just, I wanted to touch base a little bit on kind of the activity of what's required. In order to maintain our downtown and the culinary tourism aspect of what we've tried to establish and what we change market ourselves as. The reality is, is people move to Newburyport for the love of the location, proximity to the water, the access to the education that we offer. And for the cultural tourism aspect that we have cultivated. Um, and a big part of that is our restaurant community. And without the support of tourism, the reality is, is that these restaurants can't survive. I mean, we've seen that through the COVID aspect of things. These are real numbers. In July and August. We looked at about thirty-four to thirty-eight percent of out-of-towners that dined within our restaurants. And this is from a couple of different restaurants in town. And out of season, in the month of November, twenty-three point nine percent of people were out-of-towners. And in January, we dropped eleven percent of people out of town. At a quick Google search. You can find that an average household spends about eight to nine percent of their budgeted um annual budget on vacation. Twelve hundred to fourteen hundred dollars. An average person who travels on a staycation spends roughly about five hundred dollars. The reality is our downtown businesses, shopping, dining, going to the theater, really require. That money to be invested by tourism. And as somebody said on the call, yes, walking the rail trail, embracing what we have to offer. And it is something that is, we're fortunate to have as residents, but we do have to offer it to those that travel to us. We have, what we do know is we have limited public transportation. So we have zero access to getting people home in a safe way for secondly, for them to get home with zero hassle. So we don't have multiple Ubers. We really don't have a taxi. Um, and so. The ability for somebody to check in to a home. You know, on it, within a twenty-four hour period of time because they choose to want to stay in Newburyport is very limiting. Often as an operator, you can't get somebody at the front desk and our ends, which by the way, we only have eighty-eight beds in total in Newburyport. That somebody could rent to stay in as far as ends go. And so the late check-in gives people options. It's not something that's offered by people uh by our current ends at the moment. And it's a huge impact to us. So while we say quality of life, like Council of Pone said. In, in the effort of, you know, managing these um rentals, the reality is it's a little bit of not in my backyard. And I think that there's a little bit of overreaching here. I think it's prohibiting. I think it's limiting. I think that the parking piece essentially is, is a cute way to cut out a lot of the rentals that are downtown. And I think we need to really evaluate the real numbers of how this impacts us. And ultimately what it will do to the downtown that we all know and love. And I'm sure that we could evaluate something so the city knows that a home is registered. And who the contact person is if there was a concern, just like if my restaurant. Or a business downtown were to have a noise complaint or God forbid a forced entry in late night, they know who to call. I'm sure that we could register our homes so the officials have access and contact information for the right people. That's really all I have and I'm happy to share all of my um data and information with um planning. I appreciate the ability to have open forum.
Thank you, Nancy. Uh, next person, Joe Clemmons.
There we go, unmute. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Great, so um I've been involved in this for many years. I am all for reasonable. Regulation because I have rented short-term rentals all over the world. I have rented long-term rentals. I have a home in Newburyport, uh twenty-six Jefferson Street, Newburyport. So I have two units, deed it as two condos on one piece of property. So this is an investment for me. And so Bruce Vogel, four years ago, three years ago, you said, what is the problem we are trying to solve? Can anyone answer that? Cause I'm limited to two minutes in ten seconds.
I'm sorry, Joe, typically the, we take the public comments and then the uh deliberations happen after.
Well, we can't answer a question, so public comments. So, all right, so I don't understand. The problem you are trying to solve. If it's a noise issue. I call the police. If it's, if it's criminal, I call the police. So I don't understand the issue we're trying to solve. So um I have a two-unit residence on a piece of property. Four bedrooms. I only have two off-street parking. So what you're saying, and many people have specified this before, so are you saying as a long-term renter? I cannot rent my unit because I don't have five spaces. Off-street parking on twenty-six Jefferson Street. So I find this really hypocrisy. It's, it's just outrageous. And so. So are you going to affect long-term rentals with the parking? I'd like to know that, but you're not answering questions. And so uh I've been a long-term renter, a short-term renter, no complaints. This is an investment property for me. So I want to ask you, you're not going to answer this question. You're not going to answer this question, but I am not. I am not as a single woman who owns investment property, one, in Newburyport. I am not responsible for providing housing stock in Newburyport. That is highly, highly offensive to me. This is government overreach. It's not my job. It's not my job to provide. Housing stock. That's offensive. And this has gone on and on and on. There's no data. You guys have not answered any of the questions. How many complaints? How many rental units? There, there's no data. This is just, this is overreach and I'm, and I'm just ready to sell out to the highest bidding developer. Who can basically, um, you know, whatever, talk their way into getting the permits that you guys so allow. And my last comment is it's so offensive to me, so offensive that Plum Island gets exemption? Have you been out to Plum Island? They are multi-million dollar homes of people from Boston. Because they have water and sewer. That is offensive to me. The whole island has changed. And grandfather in, even though I've owned my place for thirty-three years. Maybe I'm a grandmother, but you guys don't listen to that. So um I am not responsible. I do my part. I have no complaints. I provide a service. I provide a service to this town. I've had women who, who rented from me, who are caring for their father. I've had women who who rented from me, who are caring for their fathers, who are sick and dying. I had a woman whose daughter had a brain tumor and and going to Boston, and she stayed with me. I have had people who are going to graduations, to weddings. I'm going to ask you this, and I'm leave it to you. Where do these people stay in Newburyport? At a three hundred dollar hotel? They don't. They're leaving. And I applaud all the people before me who say, we do a service to this town. And you guys don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, next person, Lisa. And Lisa, if you could just give your last name and address for the record.
This is Lisa Freeman.
Go right ahead. Thank you.
Uh, yes, I live on thirty four Lime Street, uh, close to the corner of Beck Street. Uh, it's the lower end of Lime Street, quite crowded. Most people come down the street, wonder if it's a one way. We all would agree it should be one. Um, I just would like to speak on behalf of the parking issue. Seems to be a lot of tension in this neighborhood for the parking. And if I were to walk around Beck Street and down Lime Street right now, every single one of my neighbors who live here reside here for twelve months a year. Are parking on the street. Some of them are using their driveways as a yard. Some of them are just parking one of their cars in the yard. So I feel a little bit frustrated owning an Airbnb that I live inside the same home and have parking. And I reside here, and I feel a little bit frustrated that you're, the town of Newburyport, like to monitor the guests that visit our house. Including our friends that visit our house, when our entire neighborhood is emptying out their driveways to park on the street. And also people park on Lime Street to walk on a beautiful uh trail that the town has offered. So as for all the other things I've heard tonight, I agree with everybody. Uh, we provide a service. We enjoy our company. None of our guests have been allowed. We, people are here for weddings and taking care of parents and also people in town stay here. When they are working on their own homes, because the rate's reasonable and they can bring their children and feel comfortable versus staying at the uh local ins and hotels. So I would like to know how the town is going to solve this parking issue. I I don't know how they're going to monitor it. I'd like them to come monitor it right now because it's a it's a it's an issue over here. And I see that it's upsetting my neighbors, but they are the ones that are parking on the street and and instead of their driveways. And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, next person, Jane Snow.
Jane Snow. Yes, hi, Jane Snow. Um. I wanted to first thank Council McCauley for all of his work on this, from what this originally started at to now. Um, he has spent. A lot of time and I so appreciate all of his time and effort. Um. I want to say that I, a lot of people asked about data. And because I didn't have a good experience with um a short term rental in my neighborhood. I did go through and took a lot of, take, wrote down a lot of data, and I did find that there were a hundred and about eighty five that were um on. The Airbnb sites and of those hundred and eighty five, only fifty eight had registered in the city of Newburyport. So I know that it, this did not come out of the um planning department, but I did take the time to um compile some of that data. And I also took the time to realize that many of these properties were just that, investment properties. And I'm looking at my property in terms of this is where I want to live in peace and quiet. And when there was an issue, um, there was no support when you called the police and things. And because they say that, you know, they're not allowed, they can't, when they go knocking on the door, they're not getting a homeowner to be able to register the complaint with. They're getting guests. And so I do think there's a lot of problems, and I know that Council McCauley has numerous um public comments. He's worked on this. He's tried to merge everything together, and I truly respect. I am concerned that it went from um special permit to permit. And I do think that um this is a start, but it still needs to be um have some things that worked out. And I I have faith that Council McCauley will continue to work on this and and try to address, because we do need some protections. Um, people have bought their homes in a neighborhood, and right now, according to our zoning, short term rentals are not allowed. And yet we have um a fair number in the city. And so people who are a butters need to have some protections. And again, it needs to be addressed and figured out. And I give him all the credit in the world. He's done a yeoman's job for trying to address this. And I hope he continues to support that effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane. Uh, next person uh identified as Haven Blaze. Uh, if you could just uh give your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Um, Seven Harbor Street in Newburyport, which is on Plum Island. So I think my take here, team, is that I'm a little bit different. Um, kind of a little bit more objective, a little bit more like what I'm seeing. And here's what I know. I heard we had seven complaints, and that, excuse me, four complaints. Um, from Jennifer uh in the way of who's complaining about short term rentals. We had four. So I've been in business many years. I'm sure all you guys have. It seems almost incomprehensible. We're having this beautiful document drawn up by your attorney. For four complaints, because it just doesn't seem like the crime doesn't merit what's going on right now. Okay, that's my first thing. Number two, I am an owner of property in Plum Island, Seven Harbor Street. You talk about, is it going to be degraded? Who is going to own the property? I want to tell everyone right now that my husband and I are very successful to a certain degree. We're not millionaires. And this house, Seven Harbor Street in Plum Island, is our dream house. We're literally our dream house. And we had to pay one point four million for our dream house. It's unbelievable. It's a three bedroom house. It's seventeen eighty square feet, but this was our dream house. And the only way that we can afford our dream house on Plum Island. Is to have some sort of short term rental during the summer. Okay? Now, what that entails is my husband and I a hundred percent taking care of the property. Do you know what we're doing? We're putting up barriers so there's not erosion. We're putting up seagrass to hold it back. We're putting out uh steps to the walkway and further out onto the basin, which is where we live. That there is going to be no erosion to our beautiful land that we have in Plum Island, to our great city of Newburyport. We are working really hard to make sure that happens. And guess what? We're the owners and we're not the renters. Right? So it's really important. We own the land, but we rent the land to be able to own. Uh, an extremely inflated property in Newburyport, but we love it. Okay, we love it. So here's the things that I do for my town. When they come into my house, they feel welcome. When they come into my house, they have a beach uh house book, which tells them every restaurant, every menu. Every time you should make a reservation and every time you shouldn't. So I would think as the town and being someone that's there six months out of the year. Why wouldn't you want to have someone promoting your beautiful town, promoting your menus, promoting Loretta's? Promoting the black cow. Like this is what we do. We promote the places that we love. Right? So I want to sort of just put that out there as someone who's new to Plum Island. But loves Plum Island and wants to live there permanently. But guess what? When you buy a one point four million dollar house and you have children in a school district somewhere else, you got to take baby steps. So this is what we do. Um, there's a couple of folks that I just want to call out that I loved tonight. John um Grolwitz. Uh, Eric Primack, Tom Coulter. Um, these are people that, when they said what they said, really resonated with me. The other thing I'll leave you with is that my property manager, who makes her living off of being a PM on Plum Island. Um, is is here with me, uh, here with me in spirit and thought. And I would never want to take away her livelihood when she knows this island inside and out. Super important to me. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next person, Megan Gale.
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hi, my name's Megan Gale. Um, I am one of the owners of two oh seven Northern Boulevard. You heard from my husband, but I also wanted to speak because I have very strong opinions. I understand people are upset about parking. Um, I think that we also need to remind ourselves, this town is extremely old. And houses were not built with enough parking for the year of twenty twenty two, and I think everyone needs to try to keep that in mind. But more importantly, on Plum Island, I'm very concerned with the uh two authentication steps with two different committees. I think that is absolutely. Honestly ridiculous, and it has to be in person. When we registered with the state, my husband did it online. It was seamless. It was so easy. We could submit any paperwork they needed. I think that is a very reasonable ask to have a one year. You get the place reinstated. I think to start this June will actually not just hinder all of the owners on Plum Island as well as in Newburyport. But all the businesses, I think the money that everybody brings in, uh, it helps the economy, the local economy. Everyone's proud of the schools. Well. How can you support the schools if you're taking away all this tourism, which pays all these taxes? I just don't think that is realistic when people are thinking about this. In terms of homeownership and updating the house, we actually purchased the home from owners who I believe either had rented it or were considering renting it. And the scariest thing was that uh the hot water tank when we bought the house was venting inside, basically putting CO two within the home. The minute we took purchase of the house, we actually called a plumber and that was changed to a more energy efficient appliance, like the water tank itself. But also safety for the rentals. So I I don't want to hear that we are not taking care of our homes and don't care about safety when that is actually the opposite. You know, we have also bought newer appliances, which are more energy efficient. And when we fixed up the kitchen and the bathroom, I used all local places. You know, tile's gone wild, LA Tile, which is based in Newburyport. I bought everything I could within the Newburyport. Line, you know, town line to support the local economy. I just, I think this is extremely overreach and there's a much more. I don't know, manageable solution to all of this, especially for Plum Island. I also do not think Plum Island will survive without the income that is brought in by. The Airbnbs during the summer. That probably helps support most of the restaurants on the island, especially when they have to shut down during the off season. You know, Plum Island Kitchen, love them. Uh, I don't know if they do shut down during the winter, but that means they have to bring in enough money in the summer. Which is mainly by people renting on the island. How will they be able to do that if it is limited? And also, what if we already have bookings and you guys decide this ordinance starts in June? Are you going to pay back all of the people who booked? You know, we are registered with the state, which it one would say is above the town. So how are you going to compensate owners if they have to then cancel people because of all this hoopla, which is once again ridiculous? If this is going to start, it really needs to start in the year twenty twenty three, maybe January first, or maybe the beginning of season, maybe end of May twenty twenty three. I just think this needs a lot more thought than what is being presented. I don't think this is realistic. Um, I just, but thank you for the time and, you know, shout out to the lady who owns Brian. She did amazing.
Thank you. Uh, next person, Rob Champetti.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Port and um members of the city council and members of the uh of the planning board. I want to thank you too for your time this evening. My name's Rob Champetti. I I reside at five five two Merrimack Street. I also have the privilege of uh serving as our zoning board of appeals chairman, a uh. A position, a volunteer position I've had the privilege of uh being involved in, shockingly, as I shocked myself. Every other Tuesday night. Uh, I've been a member of that board since two thousand and two, so I've I've somehow accrued twenty years of every other Tuesdays. Uh, but I will say that um I wanted to just simply chime in. I think the uh the the comment from the comments from everyone have been uh have been wonderful. And it's a great disparate input that hopefully allows us to arrive or allows our city and our city leaders to arrive at at a an alchemy that's sort of the best. And brightest of what I think of the aspire to do with these ordinances, but I I feel compelled to raise my hand if only to just qualify a statement I'd heard earlier as I was just observing. Um, I'd heard a statement from one of the other um public comments. It was uh Ms. Nikic, Stephanie Nikic, whom I know and and respect greatly. Ms. Nikic uh involves herself often in our public hearings and and we are treasured to have members of our public that that do that. So I I respect her greatly, but I think um there was a bit of a misstatement that I feel warrants just this qualification. I think it was represented. Um, maybe mistakenly that um the reason that the um the bifurcated licensing slash permitting process was. I I'll say streamlined in the most recent revision to remove the special permit, which would have come before the zoning board of appeals, which is the other board that I that I chair with my colleagues. Um, that it was streamlined uh because the ZBA, I, you know, and not to, certainly, I I don't say this to make any embarrassment. But it it's, it sounded as though it was represented that it was because the ZBA just didn't want to do the work or um that uh that the ZBA just didn't, didn't have the time or was disinterested in. And um to be clear, that that's, that could be further from the truth, and I feel um. It's worth just noting sort of this, to look at this uh by the numbers, and I've, and we've done the computation, and it's not a matter of of desire or aspiration. I think we all share that. Uh, but it's rather a matter of capacity and absorption, and I fear that I have to be sort of, you know, the the bearer of the calculus of this. When um I've shared this with our council and with our city solicitor, attorney Eichmann, in the uh in the meetings that I've been invited to participate in. If you look at the calculus of this, and I think we need to, if we take the numbers as represented, and I believe Ms. Snow had done um her own inventory, and and I commend her for that, and others have as well. And I think it's somewhere between one fifty eight and one eighty eight um is the number of registered short term rental units based on the uh the department, the mass department of revenues. Um, inventory between Airbnb and VRBO or others. If you take a hundred and fifty eight short term rental units, and then you understand that we have two ZBA hearings every month. That is, uh, you know, fifty two weeks in a year. That's twenty six. Uh, you know, if we have two every month, we have, you know, we we have a hundred and fifty eight rental units. Um, if we surrendered just merely uh twenty percent or one public hearing. Each and every evening, we have a public hearing to a short term rental unit special permit, which means that out of the five we do. Which honestly takes every meeting we go almost past eleven PM and, you know, that's a lot to ask of any volunteer board. So we start at seven and easily into eleven PM twice a month. If we took one of those slots and offered it to short term rental units. The absorption rate would take us six point zero seven years to absorb those. Uh, if we doubled that, let's say we surrender two of the five hearings, it would be um, it it would merely be, of course, half of that figure. So three, you know, three years or so, three years and change. You know, as we looked at this ordinance, as it was written, um, this renews every three years. So it's a mathematical certainty that will never get through the list, even on our best efforts and intentions, without having to reset the list. And so the worry of ZBA, and I think the worry, you know, of of my colleagues. Was simply the practicality of absorption. How do we actually execute this and do it credibly and responsibly? And fairly um with an interest toward the disparate um and and very, you know, very legitimate interests of the various stakeholders. And I think that, you know, the math is what dooms us. And so when we had shared our comments, we simply said, hey, has anyone done the math? Um, you know, how do we actually, how do we actually put, you know, execute this? How do we deploy it? How do we deal with the absorption when this is what it looks like? And, you know, um, I I think that we are up, uh, unlike perhaps other boards and commissions. The ZBA is governed by chapter forty A, which really hold, you know, it shackles our hands with respect to the timeline, that that, you know, the the hourglass that begins moving sand. The moment someone files a permit application, we have a finite amount of time by which we must either say yea or nay. Or that applicant gets their permit de facto, which essentially just means they get their permit by virtue of the fact that the ZBA has failed to act. So the notion of surrendering more of our available slots is not really practical without risking this this counter um issue of possibly having permits. Just being granted because the ZBA simply can't um can't uh address them. And so we have to toil with that, you know, real issue. So I want to make it clear that I think the council and the planning board and others, and certainly, um, you know, Council McCauley and and his efforts. Um, you know, it's a, it's a difficult toil and I commend them for it. I certainly uh don't envy them in that task. It's diffi- difficult because I believe. It's diffi- difficult because I believe they have to really weigh some some pretty powerful um and competing interests to try to find a balance. But the notion that we can simply blanket the city with a special permit and a licensing procedure. Um it may perhaps it, you know, it 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 exists, you know, it's possible in prose, but not in practice, you know, as they say. I think it is easy to write, but very difficult to deploy and execute. And I think the math, which is finite and static, uh dooms us to never getting through that list without having to reset the clock. And so I think that's really the issue, and I I certainly um you know, didn't uh intend to sort of call out Ms. Nikic again, who whom I dearly respect. Uh but rather she raised it, so it was worthy of just pointing out, if nothing else, to make sure that uh this this process is uh, you know, is vetted. And everyone who's listening, and certainly the counselors and the planning board understand that uh you know, that our comments uh weren't born of a desire to want to do less work, but rather um just a capacity and absorption issue. And and so I I've taken more time than I wanted to, but but I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Uh thank you, Rob, and thank you for that clarification. Uh chairs, I see no other hands raised at this time, uh so I'll defer to you.
Hey, in that case, I guess we should uh pull it back to the planning board and the city councillors for discussion. And Heather had uh her hand up a while ago, so she goes first.
Um I just, I would like to um speak on and talk on this in a way that I prepared. Um and I've incorporated some of the thoughts from this evening to in this. Um first of all, I do recognize the hard work that has gone into this planning for the short term rentals, and I mean no disrespect in any of the things that I'm about to say. When I became a member of this planning board this past fall, I was unaware that the the short term rental unit ordinance was being discussed. And I inquired within my company and amongst my peers, and I couldn't find anyone who was aware of the potential changes that were taking place. I do understand that our city is seeking guidelines and I respect that. I do not, however, understand some of these parameters, and I would like to offer my perspective on some of them. I am a current long term rental property owner, though I still take this ordinance seriously. And I believe I am representing many fellow Newburyport citizens when I speak about this. I asked a friend in town who has an already Massachusetts state registered Airbnb in Newburyport if they had received notification from the city in regards to these proposed changes, and they said they had not. So one question I have is whether or not written notification was sent to the one eight hundred and eighty-eight or whatever the number is Airbnb properties informing them of these proposed changes. If the concern is noise and neighborhood activity, which is busier than normal, I do appreciate that and I understand and I agree with a license being granted and monitored for disruptive behavior. In regards to the off street parking spots being required for properties to fit the short term rental parameters, how can this be separate from the parking required or seemingly not at all required in long term leased properties in our city? An Airbnb stay is generally a few nights. If a short term renter pulls into town with more cars than a driveway can accommodate, their disruption is a few days to the neighbors. If that same unit is leased long term to someone with multiple cars or frequent regular visitors, the parking problem is three hundred and sixty-five days on that unit. And there are many long term rental units in town with zero off street parking and they park full time on our streets every single day. And may I add that many primary residents opt to park on the street and use their driveway for personal recreational use. Do we at some point begin restricting those homeowners in their use on their private property? The Airbnb platform serves as a dual checks and balances system to rate both the properties and the guests. A guest who receives a poor rating will not easily find themselves renting a second time. And likewise, the property owner who doesn't receive positive reviews and ratings will not find themselves easily rented. Although some short term rental units are owned by non residents of Newburyport, plenty are actually owned by our own community members. The revenue generated by short term rentals is a direct influx to our city. It serves as income to the property owner who is not a major hotel of investors nor a board of directors. And if this property owner is a city resident, they can in turn use this income to pay their mortgage and taxes, but hopefully in a lighter way, can use this income to eat in our restaurants, shop in our stores and donate to our local charities. The renters who come in and stay in these rentals undisputably injects money into our local economy. They're happy to dine downtown and to shop in our stores. And I think most of us can appreciate the excitement of going away for the weekend and filling our purse with spending cash is part of the travel experience that many enjoy. Our stores and restaurants have braved and largely survived the worst case scenario these past twenty-three months. A two bedroom short term rental alone would provide our downtown restaurants and shops with revenue, which cannot currently be replaced otherwise. If rented at a seventy-five percent capacity on the weekends in a year, a two bedroom property would provide the downtown restaurants with thirty-nine table seatings if the renters ate out one night during their weekend stay and seventy-eight tables if they ate out both Friday and Saturday nights. And the shops would ultimately enjoy the added revenue surging throughout those days. When you multiply that times this arbitrary one hundred and eighty-eight short term rentals, and then you consider the seven days a week during the summer months in which these are rented, this is not a number to be ignored. With so few hotels and inns in our city and such a high need for downtown support, this topic is sensitive to our community as a whole. And I do wonder what the Chamber of Commerce may have, if any, in terms of thoughts on the detriments to the members of their of their chamber if we limit tourism by limiting short term rental opportunities. In terms of the comments on the housing that could replace the short term rentals, long term rental prices in Newburyport are very high. And the full year lease tenants may not have the disposable income to spend downtown that the tourists bring us. And the long term tenant may not have the regard for neat and orderly living that is required in a healthy Airbnb. A well-run Airbnb will maintain a better aesthetic for its neighbors than a long term tenant who does not have pride in ownership. My suggestion this evening is that this agenda item be considered in a way that serves the community as a whole, our residents who are property owners, our restaurants and our shop owners. This is the flavor of our community, which has over time brought each one of us here in this city. As the proposal currently is drafted, I feel it causes more harm than good. I implore everyone to think about their weekends away, the quality of the experience you would desire in your traveling, the level of privacy you would expect in a short term rental, and also think about the economic needs of our residents and our business owners. If they haven't already done so, may I ask that the city send out written notification to all state registered short term rental units, if for no other reason as a common courtesy and an act of goodwill. I believe that we are all here this evening and on every meeting in a way to be stewards of service to the overall best interest of our community, and it is our obligation to succeed in that. The short term rental experience can be mutually beneficial to the property owners and to the community and can coexist in harmony within the neighborhoods. Though I feel that the primary residence clauses and the off street parking spots in relation to the available bedrooms are obstructions to the financial health of this rental system, and I would like to see those changed. As an aside, based on the comments I've heard tonight, the number of short term rental units is hovering around a hundred and eighty-eight. And I don't know that as a hard fact, but I do also know that there's approximately seven thousand eight hundred homes in Newburyport. And if we use these two numbers statistically, we're discussing two percent of the inventory being used in short term rentals. And I do not believe those numbers are enough to affect the housing inventory problem, which I do recognize we have. They are two different issues completely. I appreciate this time and I do look forward to hearing other perspectives.
Uh Dawn Walters, you have your hand raised?
Sure, um I have several points, but I will uh just cover one one point now. Actually, it's two related points. And Andy, one of them is what you uh perhaps mentioned earlier to perhaps Attorney Eichmann or someone else could answer it. It was by one of the comments that i- if there is an appeal to the zoning board by the zoning administrator, it could only be made by the applicant and not any of the butters or potentially grieved parties. I was wondering first if your attorney Eichmann could answer that question? As 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 the zoning is currently is, as the zoning ordinance is currently written?
Sure, Dawn, and Attorney Eichmann, I believe that was uh in reference to the when the zoning determination is issued by the zoning administrator. Um uh but there is not necessarily a special permit involved, so uh the the ability to appeal that action.
Yes, um I did take a look at that. Um I've actually been examining that while while the comment has been going on. Um it's, that's what the the ordinance says is that it can only be appealed, if you read it literally, by the applicant. Um it does pose a potential problem because uh appeals of um zoning administrators from orders, appeals from orders of the zoning administrator under the zoning act can be appealed by anyone aggrieved, which would be uh could be certainly uh parties uh abutting the property if they had standing to bring an appeal um from a grant of a determination by the zoning administrator. So I think that probably merits a little further examination so we can get that language right, so we don't end up with some sort of legal challenge on procedure. But um certainly right now, what it says is that only the um applicant could appeal.
Thank you, attorney, and uh to your point, if that language is adjusted accordingly, I presume that addresses that issue.
I think it could be adjusted, yes. I haven't really thought, you know, through all the possibilities for adjusting it. I think that depends in some sense on the policy considerations here. But yeah, I think there's certainly the um possibility it could be adjusted correctly.
Thank you.
Thanks, and and my my second related point is also a point that Counselor Zaid made uh earlier. And with respect to if we change the zoning X number of years down the road, this could be, and and it's uh by right, my interpretation, and someone could uh confirm or or tell me my interpretation is incorrect. Even if that was the case, but if we also changed, and I know we're only talking, or I'm only talking about the zoning ordinance, not not the licensing, a general ordinance. But it would seem to me if if we change the general ordinance that said for for one to have an STRU, you must be either specialment or or have a by right, and it's not either, it's not or, it's and a licensing permit. It would seem to me if the city council or the government later down the road changed it, you would not have this issue. You you would have something by right, but you never could have an STRU because you also don't have the second part of it. Uh at least that's my interpretation. Thank you.
Uh thank you, Councilor Preston.
Yes, thank you. Uh so I just want to make a few comments. Um I several years ago uh actually spoke at a public meeting about this very topic uh long before I was even considering becoming a city councillor. Um so it just shows how long we've talked about this. But uh my point at the time was that uh I got married in Newburyport several years ago. And we absolutely positively could have never done it without the use of short term rental units. We had a hundred and fifty people at our wedding. Uh almost every one of them was from out of town. And uh as Nancy Caswell uh said earlier, there aren't a hundred and fifty beds in this town um through uh B and Bs. So without the ability to use Airbnbs, we could have never gotten married here. Um and you know, ultimately, of all of those uh guests that came to town, there was not a single complaint um nor issue with any of them. Um so I worry greatly about this ordinance as it exists because ultimately it's going to eliminate nearly every um short term rental unit, most specifically with uh within, you know, uh outside of Plum Island, um both by the um parking restrictions as well as the um necessity of living on site. And ultimately, by regulating out all of these units, essentially what we're going to do is regulate out all of the revenue the city gets from the short term rental units, while at the same time creating an expense um probably within the planning department to have staff that are going to be able to um to police this and and understand uh, you know, the regulations and and making sure that we have people um that are or at least units that are complying with the regulations. Um and at the same time, we're because we would be eliminating the ability to have short term rental units, we'd be eliminating the ability for tourists to come to the city and stay in the city. And then, as has been stated in many different ways, eliminating their ability to spend money at the shops and restaurants in our downtown that absolutely require um those tourist dollars to keep themselves afloat. And so, you know, I I I worry greatly, well, I I feel it's very important for us to have a a licensure um process in place so that we are certain that we we understand where these units exist and we can um police them to some extent. Uh we, in the same process, by having such a heavy regulation, we are eliminating the ability to have most of these units in town. Um and then lastly, I want to address this point around um affordable housing because I have heard several comments that, you know, if we were to eliminate short term rental units, um we would be creating uh affordable housing. I am extremely committed to affordable housing in Newburyport. And, you know, hopefully you will see as we move through council, um anywhere that there are opportunities for affordable housing, I will be extremely uh supportive of that. However, I I think it's a very faulty argument to suggest that by taking short term rental units off the market, we'd be creating affordable housing. People are buying these investment properties. They're paying very top dollar as everyone is in Newburyport for these properties. They are most certainly not going to pay top dollar for a property to have it as an investment property and then turn around and take submarket value um rental. It's not going to create affordable housing. What it's going to do is either people are going to choose to sell these homes and temporarily flood the market with houses. Um or what they'll probably do is put it on the market as a long term rental, which, you know, people can get very high prices for long term rentals. There's no incentive for anyone to take a investment property and turn it into affordable housing. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh Counselor Cameron, did you?
Uh thank you, um Director Port, um just to have some symmetry with Counselor Preston. I too got married in Newburyport, and I can assure you, everyone found a place because it was before Airbnb. And uh you know, there, I you know, I hear what people are saying in terms of limitations on people to be able to visit here. Um I hope to see you all some days uh when we're talking about hotels and other forms of large scale uh development that can bring people to Newburyport either as permanent residents or as visitors. Um but I think we're we're conflating a a couple of things here. Um I think for some people, the purpose of this is um, you know, and people coming from this in a sincere manner are around neighborhood impacts, noise, parking, I I, you know, I see some validity to that. I don't think uh, you know, downtown Newburyport, wherever there are short term rentals. Um and I did also look uh this evening on Airbnb. And if somebody wants to stay in Newburyport uh from the twenty-fifth of February to the twenty-eighth, there are twenty-one opportunities downtown Newburyport and eighteen on Plum Island. So they are definitely here. There are a hundred and five um units or properties registered on the state uh registration list, um which I just looked up. Many of them are on Plum Island. Um but let's take a step backwards. Um this is all uh new to uh the world, this country, Massachusetts and Newburyport. Um I was on the council for ten years. I got off in twenty seventeen. Um this was beginning to be discussed then, you know, there were some particular examples of um, you know, anecdotes, doesn't really create data, but you know, there were definitely anecdotes of large house parties, people pulling up in 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 buses and staying. Um so, you know, I I do think there's a need for regulation. Um I do think uh the technological advances of uh Verbo and Airbnb have made it easier for travelers for sure. But I think that also has an impact on the rental housing market. Um and I think that has been disruptive when people, um you know, I'm I'm gonna disagree here with Counselor Preston a bit. Um people are paying top dollar sometimes because they've got the money to afford to live there. Um and sometimes it's because they know um that they don't need to live there and you can maximize your um, you know, your commercial abilities uh through short term rentals at a higher rate per night than you're going to be able to charge for a monthly rent. Um if uh and and Counselor Preston herself said this, if if somebody paid top dollar, either they'll sell and and sort of flood the market with with housing stock that's available for sale, or they'll put it up as a long term rental. And I think that's exactly what for me the primary purpose is here, uh is to is to provide some ability for owner occupied people who want to rent out a room or rent out the apartment of their two family. Um and certainly that carve out for Plum Island, uh people have for years, uh pre Airbnb, pre um the technology and that interactivity. the technology and that interactivity, that's how people would make a living and be able to afford their houses by renting them out in the summer. So I think that is why we've carved that out. But no doubt, it has had an impact on the number of rental units that are available. Newburyport has lost a lot of those rental units. And when we say affordable, I'm talking small A affordable. These aren't, you know, subsidized by government in some way. But, you know, a an $1,800 one bedroom, as Mr. Grauitz mentioned, that's actually not unreasonable for around here right now. And that's, that would be a cheap rent if we weren't living in Boston. But, you know, there is no doubt that we want to have downtown strong. And I I really appreciate Nancy Caswell's analysis and and all that she's done, you know, both for her own business, but for other businesses downtown. But the reality is, the workers that are in our service economy downtown, most of them can't afford to live here. A lot of them can't afford to live here. So I see this as a way to, it's not going to solve our affordable, small A problem, but I think it's an effort to, if we can get, you know, 30, 40, 50 units rented year round, the owners still making money, that is going to have an impact. And yeah, that's that's only, you know, 10s or maybe hundreds of units. When we're talking 6,000 or 7,000 units for Newburyport, but but those small changes do make a difference. So so I think, again, the purpose for me is definitely the rental market. Newburyport, you know, having some shape shaping of that market and to limit the negative impacts. Undoubtedly, there are positive impacts to visitors, no doubt. And again, I expect to see you all when we argue about hotels at some future date. I did have a couple of questions and and maybe if Director Port can scribble these down. People asked about the start time of this. Again, I just got back on the council a month ago. I wasn't sure when that there wasn't, you know, say, we wave a magic wand, approve this, you know, in the next couple of council meetings. I I certainly don't think, you know, June 1st is is reasonable. So I I hope there would be, you know, a reasonable implementation time. The whole ZBA special permit, I think this is a reasonable accommodation between, you know, too much, you know, too much special permit onerous on people that are just trying to do, you know, rent out a room in their single family from time to time. So I I'm I'm thinking that as a good compromise. The emergency contact piece, I I'm not so beholden to that because I do think there are enforcement mechanisms elsewhere through this ordinance. So so those are are some of my comments on that. And I think, you know, just just big picture, the fact that, you know, I I haven't done the count on, you know, who's been in favor or who's been opposed. But I definitely, there are there are more people I'd say opposed to regulation or or want a lot less regulation. And and certainly, some folks that that acknowledge that this technically is not legal right now for there to be short term rentals. And and maybe they'd rather keep it that way or or have some serious restrictions and special permitting and so forth. I think the fact that we have two, you know, articulate sides that are kind of attacking this from both sides means we're somewhere where we need to be in the middle. And I think if we can look at some of the ways, again, to keep people's ability to to make some money through commercial activity in their home, you know, with one of those definitions. Again, Plum Island, I I don't think will be that impacted by this. So I know there's a lot of Plum Islanders here. But if we can, you know, look to, you know, also listen to the legitimate concerns about some of the negative impacts about Airbnb and short term rentals and just keep that in a way that will, you know, keep the the regulations reasonable. The parking piece, I I'm I'm agnostic on it. So I'd like to think a little bit more about that. I originally thought that was a good idea. Parking is a very strange thing here in Newburyport. I've lived in the South End, North End, South End again, South End again. It is a perpetual issue. Heather Rogers mentioned long term rentals and parking. I would be, I that would be a hill I would die on if we tried to restrict, you know, any sort of, you know, grandfathered rental units that really don't have parking, because I think there are many that don't have parking. So that would, that would, that would never be a slippery slope that I would be willing to go down. But maybe we can find some some compromises in that. So very interested to hear other councillors' thoughts on this and and certainly the planning board's recommendation. And again, appreciate everyone being here tonight and sharing their ideas.
Thank you, councillor Cameron. Councillor Zead?
Thank you. I I think Mark Wright had his hand up first, but if you'd like me to go, I'm happy to.
Oh, my apologies. I deferred. I have no preference myself.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to, I saw his name up, so I'll go after him. Thank you.
Councillor Wright?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of my thoughts. I I think the that that reasonable regulation is appropriate. It does provide legal or, you know, avenues within the zoning to offer this service. I I think that the that once everybody is approved and has gone through licensing, that that enforcement and efficient enforcement is key to keeping your license. So I think that that's that that whole process is going to be central to the whole discussion. And 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 it's important that if there are, you know, noise ordinance or violations, that they are appropriately addressed and considered by the licensing authority. I think that there might be some consideration, perhaps grandfathering, if you're going to insist on investors not being able to offer short term rental opportunities that they perhaps are grandfathered because they've made investments under those assumptions. And I I'm never one to take away rights that were previously afforded to a group of people. The state regulation is quite clear that it does include and allow for investors. So if Newburyport chooses to do something different, I would encourage you to think about how to make those people whole and for people going forward to acquire investment property that, you know, they they do so knowing that they're being impacted. The the application process, as it's designed now, whether it's in paper format or electronic, I think is onerous. It adds expense to the process. Getting, having to get a survey, plot plan, those, those are expensive items. And to do that on a repetitive basis annually, I think is an is a burden and will result. If that's the intention, it'll it'll take a lot of short term rental people and drive them away from regulation and doing things in an unregulated way, which is an unintended consequence. Parking, for me, I agree with councillor that that councillor Preston, that there's no real difference between long term rental use of parking spaces as opposed to short time term rental. In fact, there may maybe less of an impact. I I think that's that's something that 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 I wouldn't, I I wouldn't be in favor of. And I think the likelihood, I agree again with councillor Preston, that the likelihood of of affordable housing being generated by investors that are no longer able to do STRUs is is remote. So those are, those are my thoughts. I'm happy to 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 entertain any contrary views and take them under consideration from any of my fellow councillors. Or the and of course, the public. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wright. Councillor Zead?
Thank you. So, you know, I I guess here are my comments. For thi- this is one of those issues that for every argument on one side, there's a fair and sensible argument on the other side, truly. I mean, this is just one of those where it cuts right down. And those who've experienced ills from short term rentals have fair and and reasonable complaints. And those who have benefited or do short term rentals without any issues also deserve, you know, the same level of respect for their concerns and their considerations. But what what I, so from a high level, though, what the what I'm seeing and what I think and where I think this should go is, you know, where our current status is now is, at worst, short term rentals are not allowed at all under our current zoning. And at best, it's gray. So right there, we can probably say that doing nothing is is not an option. And in fact, that was, you know, considered early on, so we just, we have to keep moving forward. Second thing is, is where there where where there is great disparity. But and then on the other end of that, where there is consensus is that, you know, there seems to be an acknowledgement that, okay, some regulations, okay, but too much is too much and not enough is not enough. So I really think that it's it's time to come down from that 30,000 foot view. And we we basically have to go through this document and go through each section and answer, you know, some key questions and find where the consensus is on those individual questions, rather than keep talking about this broadly. So, for example, do you want to have institutional investor owned Airbnbs? Or do you want to have essentially non owner Airbnb's? Yes or no? Are you okay treating different zones differently? Do you want applicants to appear before a board? And we can do that by going through the document. We can't do it by just continually talking about things from a very high level, such as short term rentals provide economic benefit to the city. You know, I think anybody can make arguments like that on both sides. I think they're valid, but I just think that we're beyond that at this point in the discussion. And it's basically all about the details. And in order to effectuate that, we have to have a zoning thing and we have to have a general ordinance, because that's how we would, how we would do it effectively. In terms, so in terms of the the document itself, I I just wanted to offer a couple of thoughts. My ward covers Plum Island, so to the extent that you see, you know, exclusions for Plum Island, that's something I've talked about with councillor McCauley at length as the sponsor. And I appreciate that he has tried to take that into consideration. And in fact, I I just want to say to councillor McCauley, I don't, you know, I think structurally, you, you know, the the proposals are, you know, now we need to get into the details. But I think structurally, the idea that we're going to allow it in some of these zones, that we're going to have some process there. Now it's just about the details. And that's a big accomplishment. That didn't come overnight. Structurally, this has been different over the years. And out of respect for the sponsors, basically, if we don't get into the details, we're just going to keep having these same meetings over and over again to the frustration of residents and to councillors as well. And and maybe the exclusions for Plum Island are not exclusionary enough, and they should be more so. Maybe that won't be successful at all. To the, to 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 one specific aspect of this, and that is the the special permit, I just want to throw out one other thought for you, for those on the call here, because a lot of the discussion has gone into can the workload be handled by busy VA? But the other consideration is, when will they say yes and when will they say no and why? And I think that, you know, we've had this problem in the past, that, you know, we just throw the ZBA into it, but we don't actually tell them why they should say yes or no. And then either they're saying yes to everything and everybody's upset, or they're saying no to everything and everybody's upset. So without a clear cut reason to say yes or no, it doesn't necessarily going to provide, it isn't necessarily going to provide the satisfaction that some want. In closing, basically, as I said, I want to talk about process. I would really respectfully ask if the planning board could give us their their advisory opinion and that, you know, the council continue its work going through this document probably painstakingly and debating the parking requirement specifically, debating the the permit versus special permit. Because I think that's the only way we're going to come to conclusion, because I've been on these calls for years too, and they're always about the same thing, you know, hey, short term rentals are good, hey, short term rentals are bad. And we're not getting, we're not getting to the consensus that I think, you know, that the sponsors need out of respect for their time to just say, this is where it lies. So in terms of process, that would be my recommendation is, you know, if we could hear from the planning board and then bring it back to the council, have our discussions there, see if we can come to something and then close it out. So I I thank you for the time here as well.
Thank you, councillor Zead. Councillor Wallace?
Thank you, Director Port. Yeah, this is a a tough one. I mean, and and I'm sure the sponsoring councillor is looking to saying, oh, there's more work to do. But it's one of those issues that we got to get it right. And I think I agree with councillor, the councillor from Ward 1, councillor Zead, that I think the next step is take the the recommendations from the planning board and what we heard tonight and start just working through the document in in committee, you know, with the with the Planning and Development Committee. So as as a ward councillor, you know, we have to focus on our neighborhoods. And that's what we've heard, what I've heard, you know, on the campaign trail. It's, you know, we have traffic and streets and sidewalks and 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 noise. Newburyport is a busy place, but at the same time, it's a it's a vibrant place. And we want our downtown to prosper. We want to invite visitors in and share our community. So, you know, it it's kind of hard to find a compromise. But maybe, you know, if we work through this document, I think the most important thing is enforcement. We need to have our police on board. We need to make sure that we have the staff in the planning department to be able to deal with this. We have to make sure that residents who have problems are truly, you know, the issues are truly addressed. And and I just want to make sure that we don't say, oh, there's only four complaints in the city. That that's four complaints that Jennifer has heard. As a ward councillor, I've heard plenty, and sometimes there may be one, you know, concerning property, but then it affects 12 residents, you know, and and you hear about it. So there there is more out there, and the ward councillors are definitely hearing it. Now, on on the other side, you know, maybe we need to revisit the parking issue, you know, looking at the thresholds, who's in or who's out, because I think that's really important, because, you know, Plum Plum Island aside, I know they have special exceptions, but, you know, if if suddenly you can't do your your rentals because of parking or because of owner occupied thresholds, that's a problem. So maybe that's something we can also look at as kind of who's in and who's out. And perhaps also look at the date of when this has to happen, because, you know, what we hear from the ZBA, perhaps there is a capacity issue. So I think there might be some some ways to look at both sides of this. But I I I think we're getting there. But I do think, you know, another another round in committee with the Planning and Development Committee and working with the sponsor and, you know, keep it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wallace. Robert Coop?
Thanks, Director Port. Just just a couple of things. I mean, I I think it it goes without saying that a city that that has a focus on tourist activity, that Newburyport has has an issue with lack of hotel rooms. And it's something that I think all of us need to be focused on very seriously in in the next couple of years, because what's happening is the the emphasis is being put on short term rental units as as a remedy for the lack of hotel rooms. And, you know, I I live in the South End. I talk to residents all the time who are very nervous about what is happening to their neighborhoods. And in an unregulated environment, what's happening is there there are 188 unregulated units in the city right now. There is a trend towards involvement of of third party vendors, whether they are real estate agents, whether they are property managers, whether they are maintenance people. There's a whole industry that is growing around this. And it's it's changing the nature of of our neighborhoods. And and in these neighborhoods, right now, per the zoning ordinance, is com- commercial businesses are not permitted. And these are trending towards commercial businesses. They're trending away from the mom and pop, I'd like to rent out the room in my house description of this to something that is very, very much, you know, bigger and driven by economic benefit to a lot of third party vendors and participants. And I think it's really important. And I think it's really important that we pay attention to some realistic guidelines, because people who are long-term residents in these neighborhoods are very worried right now about what this is becoming. So, I, I, I think we need to keep talking about this. I think we need to take these guidelines very seriously. But the idea that we continue in an unregulated environment will, I think, will destroy the neighborhoods that, that are so important to this community. Thanks.
Thank you, Robert. Counselor Khan?
Great. Thank you, Director Port. I want to thank a lot of the folks in public comment. I thought that was a really educational kind of perspective from two sides of a very, as we can see, nuanced issue. What I would suggest, and I think it's been said by some of the other counselors here, is that, you know, we are, you know, there's a reason we're doing this. One is our table of use does not identify it. So, right now, this is not allowed. So, we're trying to resolve that. And I think we are getting there. It is definitely a longer process for those who have been following the issue for the last three or four years or maybe even longer. But I think the next steps, and, and I agree with what some of the other counselors said very eloquently, is that there are some issues that are percolating to the top, for sure. But one thing too, that I thought was very, actually very well-stated by one of the public comment folks, was related to those who are in the community right now and that notification, or maybe even bringing some involvement, so that we really could be educated from the perspective of those who are operating these. You know, we've heard some from public comments, but there's this larger group. We also know about the neighborhood issues. So, I would say and suggest this, as we did with some of the other kind of more complicated areas here in the council, is we end up having a table of specific topic areas, or, you know, we could call them pain points or points that we need to address. And as a, a committee here or a council, council of the whole, we keep working on this. And I definitely support that. I think we are getting somewhere and we need to do something. But definitely, I, I think we're making progress. And again, appreciate everyone's time and the comments they've said to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Khan. Alden Clark?
Yes, hi. I just, I, I want to do acknowledge a lot of the comments made. I think it's been very helpful. I, I think, looking at this, the, I support creating an ordinance like this, mainly because as it was stated currently, they're all operating illegally. So, that I think it is something that is necessary. So, that's why I encourage us going forward on this. There, just to, just to clarify some of the things, there are, there are different options that we're talking about as the, the different types of STRUs, which some that don't require an order to be in residence. So, there's lots of different flavors with that. So, I just want people to be aware of that. And the, that also applies to sort of the size of them and the, and the, and the parking. I do think that the parking regulation is, is very restrictive. If, as people have mentioned in the South End, there's so many places don't have any off-street parking. And so, I think that is something that should be looked at. And I agree with Counselor Z that we need to look at the specifics of the ordinance and get more discussion on that, and perhaps among the city councilors to, to really discuss that based on the input that they have from their, their constituents. I think it's important to, in looking at this, to discuss the enforcement, because currently, since, since they are all illegal, it's been going forward without any enforcement. So, the question is, do we enact this? And, and then, say thirty or forty will operate legally under the provisions of the ordinance, but then the rest of the hundred and forty will just continue to operate without the regulation. And so, I'm not sure that solves any problems. So, I think the enforcement side of it needs to be discussed as well. So, I think a lot of valid issues have been raised, and I think it does need more discussion. I would say I recommend that we do continue with this and that we do need some sort of ordinance to cover all of the situations. Thank you.
Thank you, Alden. Counselors, I don't see any other hands raised at this time. I defer to you as chairs.
Thank you. It's been a quite a, quite an evening on this. For the, the planning board, I guess the, the question would be, are, is the board ready to close the public hearing and move toward deliberation of the ordinances before us and make a recommendation to the city council? And is there anything else you'd like to add? I see Don Walters' hand is up, so maybe he's responding to that.
I am. Thank you, Rick. I, I suggest that we close the public hearing and the planning board should have another meeting to provide specific recommendations. I think we're hearing there needs to be some additional granularity. I suspect that one of the areas that the planning board can probably provide the most value to the city council is with respect to parking, some of the other items with noise, whatever, as you know, is the general ordinance, not, not the zoning ordinance. So, I think for us to provide the best service to the city council is for us to, is to dig deeper and to rewrite or suggest some sections here in the zoning ordinance to reflect what I think some of, some of the folks are suggesting we have more granularity, at least when it comes to parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Any other comments from planning board members on this, this matter? Would you like to make that in the form of a motion, Don?
Yes. I, I guess the first motion I should do, if, if you agree, Rick, is for, for me to make a motion to close the public hearing on the, on the planning board side or not?
That's, that's good, yeah.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second on it?
I'll second, Alden.
Great, thank you. Then I'll call for a roll call vote. You can find my roll call here. Well, I guess I can see you. Alden?
Yes.
Heather Rogers?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I think I'm the last, Rick, yes. Okay, so, we're closing the public hearing. I guess Counselor Z has raised his hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick suggestion. I, I just wanted you to maybe suggest that you explain what that means. It, it doesn't mean that residents can never speak again about this and just anticipating emails I'm going to get later tonight or tomorrow morning. This is not the end of the public process. So, if you'd just be so kind, I think.
Sure. Well, this would be closing the public hearing from the planning board's point of view. I mean, the planning, the hearing is still open from the Planning and Development Committee's point of view until, until they close it. And I assume that this will go into future meetings with, with Planning and Development. It gives us that basically this, the time to say we have closed, closed the planning board's process for public input. We've received a lot of input and we will move toward, toward deliberations and a recommendation. We just have to get to a point of closing a hearing before we actually do that. Does that make sense, Counselor Z?
Yeah, yes, thank you. So, so just so residents know, I mean, the, the council has a continued process where there'll be more opportunities for public comment written or spoken. There'll be a city council meeting where you can attend. So, I just want to assure residents that they're not, this is, they're not shut out. We, we're waiting for, the planning board will render and, and suggestions to us and so forth, and then the process continues. So, thank you very much. I appreciate you having me speak for a moment.
Thank you. And so, then I guess.
Just to thank you, Counselor Z. Yeah, we'll talk about the city council and the planning and development committees some actions when the planning board's done here.
Right. So, I guess the next point would be to, I guess this is, since it is not a hearing, we don't have to actually make a vote to move it to a date certain, but I would assume that we were going to try to aim for the next meeting, recognizing that we have a huge agenda at the March second meeting. So, we may, we may end up at, at ten o'clock at night again on March second. But we will try to get to it as expeditiously as possible, so that we can, can bring a recommendation to the council based on tonight's meeting. Does, do any planning board members wish to be more specific than that in terms of how we, how we carry this forward?
Rick, this is Andy. Could I ask for a clarification?
Sure.
Is your expectation then, I don't, I'm not sure whether you as acting chair would be drafting something that the board would then review at the meeting on the second, or how do you want to handle that?
No, I think we're, we're working with the document that we have right now. And, and that the, you know, if we, I, I can't see myself making a recommendation to the board at this point. I think there are disparate viewpoints on the board, as we've heard. And so, I think we need to start from scratch with any changes, if anybody wants to propose any changes to this ordinance. As this hasn't been noted, you know, this has been an attempt to, in a sense, legalize short-term rentals in Newburyport with reg- with regulations. And so, the question is, what is the, the balance between the amount of legalization and the amount of regulation that remains? So, I think that's, I think I would just leave it without, without trying to steer the board in, in any particular way for the next meeting.
Thank you.
So, okay, the, I, well, I guess our, our hearing is closed, so I guess it goes back to the councils at this point.
Thank you. I was trying to maybe catch you before. You know, my, my sense here is, is clearly the council needs to do some work on this. I know Counselor Wallace also has her hand up and I'd be certainly interested in her take on this. I think process-wise, I, I'd, I'd ask Director Port, should we keep our portion of the public hearing open? As Counselor Z alluded to, whether we close the public hearing and continue as Planning and Development Committee, most likely, also as a committee of the whole, we will continue to want to get public input as one would in a hearing, but it can also be done through a meeting. So, so clearly the council needs to do some work on this.
Understood, yeah.
Yeah, if, if, I'll make one other point and then maybe let you respond and then, then Counselor Wallace. I would certainly welcome the planning board's assistance here. I think process-wise, though, we're, we're getting, again, to quote Counselor Z, we, we got to get into the details and to go through that list of things, you know, who's in, who's out, the parking, and I know this will be painful for the councilors who've been serving for a while and dealing with this. But I, I do think, you know, I think, I'm, I'm sensing we could get to something that would be agreeable to all sides. It may not be exactly what they're looking for, but it would be something that people could live with. And again, this ordinance is, and, and there's also the, the general ordinance that's in the License and Permit Committee that will, will need to be adjusted based on whatever happens with this zoning ordinance. You know, this is all new. It's new for Massachusetts. I was one of the few people who did not commend Counselor McCauley, because I think I've done it every opportunity I've already had. He's put a lot of work into this. This is based on Boston's. Other hu- communities in Massachusetts have done this very permissively and very tightly regulated. And I think ours is in a, is a good middle ground if we can get there. So, in terms of process, so thank you, Counselor McCauley. So, I'm wondering if the planning board kind of going off on its own and working on this is, is just kind of a sep- a little bit too much separation when we could be moving something forward sometime in the next couple of weeks or months. So, that, that's my thought on that. I don't know if Counselor Port, if you have any recommendation? And then I'd like to hear from Counselor Wallace.
Sure, thank you, Counselor K. But I, I would defer obviously to the, the council members here, the committee, this council sponsors, to how you want to handle this going forward. But it would, it would not be a typical, in recent time, the council has more often than not kept an item like this in committee, so it can continue to work on it even after the planning board's portion of the public hearing has been closed. So, again, I'll defer to you on how you want to handle that. Perhaps, certainly I would be planning to attend those meetings and, and share sort of insights of what the, where the planning board has left off. Hopefully, we'll be able to provide to you a sort of written recommendation, given the intricacies or complexities or various opinions on this particular legislation. Sometimes that recommendation is relatively straightforward. But if, if there's, if we're involved, as the Chair, Chair Tantor mentioned, we need to get a little more deliberation from the planning board on that. So, assuming that they do that on the second, they could then provide recommendation to your committee and to the council as a body, committee of the whole, of course. And then you as planning and development committee members, I guess, could decide at that point how you'd like to handle it.
Okay, would, would we keep this, this city council portion of the public hearing open? Or would we close that? And is there any downside to either of those?
What I would recommend, I, again, just my, my recommendation would actually be to close the public hearing for the zoning, for the required zoning hearing that's under the zoning ordinance. However, given that you have this item before yourselves in committee, and I presume you might want to keep that in committee, as Counselor Z had mentioned earlier, while the required public hearing on the statute, you know, would be satisfied and the zoning ordinance would be satisfied. I know that the council may continue to want to work on that. And that would be, as Counselor Z had mentioned, another opportunity for the public to attend, following the city calendar, attending that meeting or meetings. And then as Counselor Z had mentioned as well, the full council would be taking a vote on a zoning amendment if it's brought out of committee. And, and that would also be another opportunity to, to provide public comment at the ca- at the beginning of the council's meeting is the typical process there.
Okay, thank you. I think that makes sense. So, so we would presumably close the public hearing and keep it in committee and the council, either through Planning and Development or Planning and Development, council of the whole, would continue to work on it. Counselor Wallace?
Yes, thank you. Director Port somewhat answered my question, but yes, I agree with that process. I just had a question for Chair Tantor. What, so if you're going to make a recommendation to, to the Planning and Development Committee or to the council, committee, the whole, et cetera, what kind of product are we looking at? So, you, will it, your discussion be posted on your agenda so the public can see that? And then you will debate and then either you'll provide some sort of memo or comments or actual revisions? So, you know, what can, what can we expect from the planning board?
Thank you. Actually, that was really why I had my hand up, because I just wanted to clarify that we have a, we have a statutory requirement under state law to make a recommendation to the city council. It's kind of unusual in Newburyport that we have these, this joint public hearing process, which is sort of in addition to, or layered on top of the statutory requirement for the planning board to hold a public hearing. But, you know, we have to make that recommendation. Typically, it would be a, a letter, a memo, whatever, that would say, you know, we recommend, just for sake of argument, we recommend adoption of the ordinance with the following changes. Or we recommend not adoption of the ordinance. That, that type of thing. It could be very simple. It could be more complex. It really depends what, what type of changes we, we think, when, after going through deliberations. Again, I don't want to try to prejudge this, but to, to determine what modifications we might think would be recommended to make, to make the ordinance better, you know, just to put it that way. We, as I say, I would like to put it on the agenda for the next meeting. We have a huge agenda at the next meeting and I worry that it will be at ten o'clock that night too. And it's not a good time to start debating zoning ordinance. But we, we'll do our best. And, you know, it, the, because of our joint public hearing process, we really have, at this point, parallel paths. And the Planning and Development Committee moves forward to make its recommendation to the council. Planning Board moves forward to make its, its recommendation to the council. I don't know whether, you know, which one is going to get first. We would like to be helpful to planning and development and, and hope that our recommendations can be helpful to their deliberations, or to your deliberations. That will depend on, you know, whether we can get through it on the second, I guess.
Thank you. And if, if I may follow up, that, that was also another question I was going to have is, you know, maybe this can be worked out later to the exact date that we will have another committee meeting. But do we as a committee want to wait for the planning board's recommendation? Or do we want to continue in parallel? So, maybe, you know, the chair and the sponsor can, can discuss tho- those options. Thanks.
It's a good suggestion. Thank you. All right, so I think from a process standpoint, I would make a motion for Planning and Development Committee to close the public hearing and keep this item in committee.
Second.
All those in favor from the committee?
Aye.
I think you have to do roll call.
I'll do a roll call. Alphabetically, Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Chair Cameron. Yes. All right. So three to zero, and thank you for that. Uh, so we'll we'll um I'll be in communication with uh Mr. Tantor um as to how we'll interact with the planning board and and per Counselor's Wallace Wallace's advice, we'll we'll figure out uh how to make this uh the most efficient process. Uh, we do have some other items in planning and development, so uh we we would be having a meeting sooner rather than later, so we can we can make this an agenda item, at least to discuss process, if not content. Um, and and also, um, you know, would would be interested in opinions from the planning and development committee members and other counselors as to, I I imagine future meetings around this probably would would best be handled as a council of the whole. I know we try to, we're trying to get away from those, but um, that that may be the way to handle this particular item, just so we can get get closer to consensus, if that's possible, so.
Counselor Cameron, could I interject just sec- for a second here, please?
Sure. I can't see who you are, but go ahead.
This is Jonathan Eichman. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Attorney Eichman. Thank you.
City listeners, offers, yes. Just want everyone to be aware that there is a requirement in both the zoning ordinance and in state law that um once the public hearing is closed, uh, the ninety day clock to adopt a proposed ordinance starts to run. And that can be changed or basically reset if another public hearing is held, but once you close the public hearing, the clock starts to run. If you want to reopen the the public hearing, you can do that, but then you have to issue notice for that. So before this everything shuts down here, I just want everybody to be aware of that requirement.
Uh, yeah, that's that's important information to remember. Um uh for for counselors to well, um should we reverse our vote and keep it open or or just go and know that the ninety day clock has been set if we don't get to that point? Um, you know, if we're getting close to that point, we we need to have another public hearing, which is, you know, it's more work, but it's certainly doable.
I my, I would recommend that that we close the hearing. I think ninety days would be enough to do what we need to do. It gives us a deadline and, you know, keep this moving before budget season kicks in. Um, you know, I think I I am fine with the ninety days. I think we can do it.
Counselor Preston, any thoughts on that?
I concur. I think having a deadline is good for us. This has been kicking around for many, many years now. Let's, you know, roll up our sleeves and get this done.
Okay, great.
So if I guess uh you 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 probably just need to um vote to adjourn your meeting and we'll go on to our business.
Okay, and uh Counselor Lane, you had your hand up?
I did. Yeah, I just wanted to ask real quick, cause I still have this in license and permits, too. How do you want to handle that? Just get through the committee of the whole.
Yeah, I I uh my take on this and I, you know, uh, Counselor McCollough is also on license and permits as I am. Um I think maybe, you know, keep that in committee now. I think work on the zoning ordinance and then we would try to then match up the general ordinance with um that's some license and permits with with the zoning ordinance. So I think, yeah, just keeping it there for now works.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so um I'll make a motion uh to adjourn uh planning and development and committee of the whole from the city council side.
Second.
Or, okay. Uh, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, but you need a roll call.
We do, because we're remote. Okay, is it just the the just the three of us or does council of the whole, do we, as does everyone have to go through it?
I would recommend committee of the whole.
Okay, um, I'm not gonna do it alphabetically, but um, all right, so I'll uh actually, could somebody else make the motion? Cause I'm the chair. I shouldn't be making motions. So make a motion to um.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I think that was Counselor Wallace seconded by uh Counselor Preston.
Has his hand up.
Yeah, I was just about to say that. I saw that Counselor.
Yeah. It is a point of order indeed. Um, I've never seen the full committee of the whole vote if it's it's in planning and development, so the voting members are the three of you on everything. That's my experience uh in all the years I've been on. I don't know. I've never seen the committee of the whole vote on the recommendation or adjournments or anything. So just my thought on that.
I I concur. I don't have the experience the Counselor Z has, but that's.
I I can, I concur as well. We never did that when we were doing planning and development these last four years.
Sounds good. So motion was made by the two other members of planning and development, uh, Counselor Wallace seconded by um Connie Preston and uh all those in favor, Con or roll call Connie Preston?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron, yes. So we are adjourned and um thank you, planning board, and uh thank you, public. And we're whittled down to fifteen attendees now, so everyone has hopefully said their piece and uh we'll we'll see you on the other side. I think I think the council can leave now, right?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Take care, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. And um I have submitted some comments. Uh, I know Bonnie has submitted some comments. I think Beth actually submitted a few few notes as well. Uh, does anybody have any further comments about the minutes or would like to make a motion?
Uh, Rick, this is Don. I'll make a motion to approve the February second, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Thank you.
As as amended.
As amended, thank you. Thank you.
I'll I'll second, Alden.
Thank you. Um, okay, I'll go through the uh roll call. Um, Alden?
Yes.
Uh, Heather?
Yes.
Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Uh, Don?
Yes.
And Rick, yes. So the minutes are approved. Uh, Andy, do you have any um updates for us?
Um, I think the only thing that comes to mind I would want to know right now is just that um we should think about, uh, and I can talk with you um uh and Bonnie San talk about this, but a date uh working with the council for a public hearing to talk about the D H C D guidelines, uh, under the housing choice legislation and um uh concerns about it relative to our forty R district. So um might just want to think about a date that works for everybody sort of collectively and uh as best as possible, uh, and and get something on the calendar. Um, I'm not concerned about right this moment setting that date, but just just something we should uh we should plan for and then hopefully uh planning board members and and obviously council members and others can uh weigh in on that at that public hearing.
Actually, uh, Andy, I had I had uh meant to talk to you about this that uh at the last meeting, Alden and I had both um volunteered to work on on this uh in terms of um consulting with you, I guess, um about a response uh in terms of the the March thirty-first deadline and um, you know, if we, Alden and I were both on that um the webinar today. I don't know whether you were in that one as well, but it was a very good webinar. Um, and uh so I I would like to make an appointment with you to sit down and talk about where we go from here in terms of getting to the the March thirty-first deadline.
That sounds good. I I assume we'll talk offline about dates that work and then uh, yeah, okay, sure.
Okay, good. Um, so that's your only your only update. I don't think that I have any updates beyond that. Um so any other issues that uh planning board members would like to raise at this point?
Rick, this is Don. I'd like to uh throw something out to the to the board from a process point of view. I I think as, and I think you alluded to uh having a planning board recommendation, especially which I suspect, even if there is a majority vote, we probably should we probably will provide in this letter some members, either their name or some of them, you know, disagreed, et cetera, because I I suspect uh we're 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 not going to get, everyone's going to uh agree. Oh, I may be wrong, but I suspect not. Uh, so one of the ways I was perhaps suggest, uh, I was thinking about is I use when we do business, put key business points as an example. I'm I'm willing, if it's I think it's okay that I would send a uh an email to Andy or like, cause I don't think I can send it to all of you, and he in turn would send it send it to each of you and perhaps each of the other planning board members, if they have the time, would like to do so. I'm gonna put down, you know, my thoughts. I'm gonna put them in bullets, not prose, and limited adverbs, et cetera, et cetera. And perhaps that will facilitate or expedite some of our uh discussions, if not the next, you know, this the coming meeting, the the following meeting. So I didn't know whether anyone think that's a crazy idea or if there's some error to that.
Well, I think that's a great idea. I, you know, I think we did some of that around Waterfront West at at one point. Um, and I think we really need to get a head start, especially given our our upcoming uh workload uh with the the three applications that are that I know of on the agenda for the the second. Um, so uh I think that would be very helpful and I think that, you know, I guess if we aimed for this kind of coming right up, so if we try to do that within the next week, I guess that's what what would be uh most useful. And relating to your your fir- your introductory remarks, I almost wonder whether we should consider a majority and a minority report, in a sense. Um, I've I've seen that done and it may be useful to do that, given we may have very different um points of view on a number of these things.
Uh, Chair Tantor, I was actually thinking the same thing.
Yeah, I I I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to shut out anybody who isn't, who is in the minority on any aspect of this. And I know, I think when we had a a previous application that was controversial, I think maybe some members felt that they they didn't, since they didn't vote with the majority, they were they were not heard. And I think it would be good to uh in this case, to do that.
Okay, and and what I'll try to do since I was the uh guilty party of making that suggestion, I will try to get within the next say by Monday, send an email to Andy uh of what it is and and I'll put the word draft, you know, to 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 do to to cover my backside. But it'll just be a bunch of disparate points and you guys can throw it in the trash can or whatever you want to do, but perhaps it may say this guy's, you know, makes some sense or I don't know what planet he lives on. So I'm I'm happy to be the first one and, you know, who who knows whether it it that helps anyone. Um, so I'm happy to be the guinea pig.
Great. Thank you. And anybody else can can uh is welcome to do that.
Be a guinea pig with me.
Yeah, we can have a whole letter, right?
So one, one question, Rick. I just wondered, as far as you talked about meeting with Andy about the uh community housing issue, the M E T A and so forth, um, is it allowed for us to get together and toss around ideas with that? I mean, just given some of the materials you sent out originally with that as far as the.
Us being you and me?
Yeah, uh, or you and me and Andy?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that was the expectation, I think, right?
Yeah, right. It's not a, it's not a quorum of the board.
Yeah, no, I just, yeah, okay, fine. I'm open to that.
Okay, anything else? If not, um, I would like to hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll I'll motion to adjourn, that's Alden.
Thank you.
Second, Doc, it's Bob.
Thank you. Okay. Um, okay, so uh all those in favor, Alden?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Rick, yes. Uh, we are adjourned and thank you for your endurance tonight.
Good night, all.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Night.